The 8th regular session of the 28th SP is hereby called to order. All rise for the location to be led by the Honorable Board Member Minarvasi Kasinabi. Please remain standing for the singing of the National Anthem of Nangbukidnon.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of a new day and for allowing us to gather once again here in the session hall, united by one purpose, and that is to serve the people of Bukidnon with integrity and compassion. Lord, as we begin the session, we humbly ask for your presence to dwell among us, enlighten our minds so that every discussion and decision we make will bring genuine progress and lasting peace to our beloved province. Grant us wisdom that comes from you alone, wisdom that guides us to choose what is right over what is easy, and to speak with kindness always. Bless our presiding officer, our fellow board members, and everyone working in the provincial government. May you keep us steadfast in our calling as public servants, always putting the people welfare above personal interest. We also lift up to you the people of Bukidnon, our leaders, our farmers, workers, teachers, students, families, and leaders in every community of this province. Please continue to bless them with strength, hope, and unity. There Lord, may everything we do today be a reflection of your grace and your will. We dedicate this session to you in the mighty name of Jesus, amen. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen.
Please call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Roll call, provincial vice governor, live, can you?
Here.
Board member Mario Junior B. Albarisi, on leave, absent, Chair. Board member Godofredo I. Balansad, absent, with unapproved official business travel. Board member Minarvasi Kasinabi. Board member Bobby J. B. Delion, absent under official business, unofficial business. Board member Marlon Brando B. Delion.
Present.
Board member Armando Junior S. Vangelista, absent on sick leave, Mr. Chair. Board member Jose Miguel Esposito. Absent on leave. Board member Oliver Oviedo Garcia. Absent on leave. Board member Riel Lu Estlinas. Absent. Board member RB Leases.
Present.
Board member Holley C. Monsanto.
Here.
Board member Alicia Isunnahum.
Present.
Board member Joseph D. Palmada.
Present.
Miss Board Member Ranolfo S. Junior G. Pipito.
Present.
Chair, there are eight out of fifteen members of this honorable body. There is a corrum.
There being a corrum, the 18th regular session of the 28th SP is hereby in order. Majority floor leader, you recognize, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. We will now proceed for the approval of the calendar of business, and this also includes the approval of the minutes of the previous regular session, Mr. Chairman. For now, Honorable Presiding Officer, for the first reading, we have thirty-three items. And for the second reading, Mr. Chairman, of thirty-three items for the first reading rather, Mr. Chair, twenty-three items in the second reading, we have one under the question R, five items under the other communication, and in our addendum I, Mr. Chairman, we have two items for the first reading. So moving for the approval of the calendar of business as presented, Mr. Chair.
Objection, comments? There are none. Motion is approved. Attorney Leases, do you have a comment?
No. No, no, no. Proceed to the minutes.
Okay. Motion is approved.
Mr. Chairman, proceeding to diminish the approval of the minutes of the 17th regular session of the 28th Sangguniang Panalawigan, held at the ESP session hall, Malay Balay City on September 21, 2025, copy of the same disseminated advance for consideration of this August body. Thus, I move to dispense with the full reading of the minutes of our previous regular session, Mr. Chair.
Objections, comments? Comment from the Honorable Leases, go ahead, sir.
Mr. Chair, after careful review, I would like to respectfully move to amend the minutes of the 17th regular session, specifically item number seventeen under the second reading. I respectfully withdraw my motion for the approval of ordinance number 112-2025, 16 Sangguniang Bayan of San Fernando, approved on September 22, 2025 of the Sangguniang Bayan of San Fernando, Bukidnon. But instead refer, would like to have it referred back to its origin for being ultra-virous, instead of the approval, Mr. Chair. Because the penalty they instated is five thousand, which is applicable only for province and city. The municipalities can only impose two thousand five, as the fine in the penalty section, Mr. Chair. So I so move, Mr. Chair.
Objections, comments? There being none, motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, proceed.
This is also pertaining to the roll call, and it was also included in the minutes, no, journal? This is pertaining to the manifestations of the good gentleman, our PCL president, Mr. Chairman, during the time because of the confinement for, I think, as I said, the confinement, the letter that was sent to the office of our secretary, Mr. Chairman, is only after, no, for the roll call, Mr. Chair. So for the manifestation, the Honorable Board Member Engineer Armando S. Vangelista Junior wanted also, Mr. Chair, that his absence is for the confinement in the hospital, for a major operation, Mr. Chair. So I think that would be included also for the amendment in the minutes of our previous regular session, Mr. Chair.
Any...
Second, second.
Motion is approved.
For the matter, Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of the minutes of the 17th regular session, as amended, Mr. Chair, of the 28th Sangguniang Panalawigan, Mr. Chair.
In the second to the motion, objections, comments? There being none, motion is approved.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. So I move for the following, Mr. Chairman, item number... May we proceed with the first reading, Mr. Chair? Before we proceed for the approval, Mr. Chairman, may we now recognize our secretary, Mr. Chairman, Attorney Apollo Magualli, to read the first item therein, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Secretary, please proceed.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you, Majority floor leader. Thank you, Mr. Chair. First reading and reference of business, item number one. Proposed Resolution Number 073-2025 of the 28th SP, authored by Board Member Holley C. Monsanto. Second legislative district, this province entitled "A Resolution Amending Resolution Number 035-2025 of the 28th SP, Series of 2025 entitled 'Resolution Profusely Requesting and Informing All Municipalities and Component Cities in the Province of Bukidnon to Diligently Comply Before Submission to the Sangguniang Panalawigan to Complete Statutory and Administrative Requirements for Review of the Respective Annual and Supplemental Budget to Avoid Delays Thereof, by Adding the Place If Available."
Majority floor.
Yes, thank you, Attorney Magualli or Secretary. Mr. Chairman, so I move for the follow, approval of the following, Honorable Presiding Officer. For item number one, this will be transferred to the new business for the day, and this will be marked as item number twenty-four, Mr. Chairman. From items number two to seven, this will be referred to the Committee on Appropriation Rules and Privileges. Item eight and nine, this will be referred to the Committee on Barangay Local Government and on rules and privileges. Item number ten and eleven, Mr. Chairman, this will refer to the Committee on Vitification and Tourism and on rules and privileges. For item number twelve, this will be referred to the Committee on Social Service and on rules and privileges. For item number thirteen and fourteen, Mr. Chairman, this will be referred to the Committee on Education and on rules and privileges. For item number fifteen, this will be referred to the Committee on Environmental Protection, Climate Change, Disease Prevention and on rules and privileges. For item number sixteen, Mr. Chair, this will be referred to the Committee on Health and on rules and privileges. Honorable Presiding Officer, from items number seventeen to item number twenty-six, this will be referred to the Committee on Loss, Justice and Human Rights and on rules and privileges. For item number twenty-seven, this will be referred to the Committee on Public Television, Social Reform, and on rules and privileges. Mr. Chair, from items number twenty-eight to item number thirty-three, this will be transferred to the new business for the day, and this will be marked as item number twenty-five to thirty. And in our addendum, Mr. Chairman, addendum I, we have actually two items, Mr. Chair, and these two items be marked as item number thirty-one and thirty-two, Honorable Presiding Officer. So moving for the approval as enumerated, Mr. Chairman.
Objections, comments? There being none, motion is approved.
Honorable Presiding Officer, we will, before we will proceed to our question R, Mr. Chair, may we now proceed with our resolutions, Mr. Chair?
Resolutions of...
Before we proceed with the question R.
Recognizations, yes?
Yeah, resolutions for recognitions, Mr. Chairman. So I think I move for our recess, Mr. Chair, so that we will accommodate our... ...automaguest for our resolutions, Mr. Chair, and recognitions.
Yes, I suggest let this be a part of the privilege R to be given to the, what, to the author
Yeah, but...
of the resolution. So let this be a privilege given to him.
Would it be in the privilege?
Yeah, yeah, mm, diba?
The privilege, ba?
Rather than the question R, yes, yes. What is the, what is the more appropriate treatment?
I think the question R, Mr. Chairman.
Provided in the calendar business, Mr. Chair, it is, it is part of the question R, Mr. Chair.
Ah, it is part of the question R.
Therefore, it is more appropriate to suspend the...
No, no, I think as requested also by our secretariat, Mr. Chairman, because they find it solenty indeed transcribing of the record, Mr. Chair. So it would be in the recess, Mr. Chairman. Otherwise, everything will be recorded, Honorable Presiding Officer.
Okay, okay.
So that's why, that's why I manifest for the recess.
The recess.
So again, Mr. Chairman, I move for the recess to accommodate our invited guest during the recognition and of this various resolution, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Honorable Monsanto?
Some query, Mr. Chair. Inasmuch as we have included this item, several items under the question R's, and then if we will be handling the, or handing the resolutions during the recess, would it mean that we don't, we will no longer have any items under the question R when we return? Record lang. Okay, so would that mean we will still be... Okay, so would that mean we will still be calling them during the question hour? But on, only the formality of giving the resolutions, okay, Mr. Chair, thank you.
So any second to the motion of Honorable Palma Da? Motion is approved.
And may we now again, Mr. Chairman, recognize a gentleman coming from the Second Legislative District, the Honorable Board Member, Denlyan, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Honorable Marlon Brando Denlyan, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Majority Floor Leader. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and my colleagues, as well as the guests, visitors this afternoon. May I present to you the City Health Officer. This is in connection and relation with my congratulatory commendation resolution of the Sanguniang Panlalawigan, sponsored by this representation. And I am inviting him, and I would like to introduce to you, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Dennis P. Sangalang to present to us. This is in related with the commendation of the City Health Office Malay Balay Oral Health Program for being awarded the Twenty-Twenty-Five Gold Standard Oral Health Facility by the Department of Health. It is my pleasure to introduce our esteemed guest from Malay Balay City Health Office, Doc. It is your time to, could you place to the podium?
Yes, Dr. Dennis P. Sangalang, welcome, sir, and congratulations
Thank you.
for a job well done and for being nationally recognized, yes?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Doc.
Original level.
The original level. Soon to be nationally recognized. Yes, sir. Would you like to say a few words? How were you able to? What did you go through for you to be recognized as such? And then what are the unsaang mga criteria for you to be recognized as such also?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My respect to this August body, of course, the Twenty-Eight Sanguniang Panlalawigan, headed, of course, by our Vice Governor, Honorable Clive Kinyo, and all the board member, of course, special mention to Board Member Marlon Brando Denlyan for this opportunity, no? And of course, to the Department of Health, for giving us this recognition. The City Health of Malay Balay, and is trying our best to really give the services to our people closer to them, no? In fact, I think one of the criteria for this Gold Standard Oral Health Program is that we have complied the ratio of having one dentist to fifty thousand population. So Malay Balay City has a total of two hundred thousand population, and the city has hired four dentists for this, Mr. Chair. And not only that, the, our mayor really pushed us to give better services to our people by providing us the state-of-the-art dental equipments, our dental chairs. Nagpalitgyun si mayor o tulukabuk ng dental chair, no? Ang isa gibutang sito sa Mapolo Lingin, in the, our hospital in Upper Pulangi, of course, to cater our patients coming from the eight barangays nga diligun maka anhidre sa city proper, no? We also have two in the City Health Office. And then we also doing our hatud servisyo, Mr. Chair, going to the barangays using our dental bath. Now, so with that, siguro nakita sa evaluators, no, from the Regional Health Office, what the city government has been doing specifically on the program on the oral health. Because I know some of the LGUs, they don't even have their own, they have, wala ganis sila dentistha, no? Our provincial dentist pa ang rotate dito sa obang mga LGUs, which until now haven't hired their dentist, no? But sa Malay Balay, ipaningkamutan gyod, Mr. Chair, ni Mayor Warren Pabiliaran, grabe nga support ang yangi hatag. And with that, we owe it to the people also of Malay Balay to give better services to them. That's all, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sangalang, and to your team. Congratulations once again for a splendid service to the people of Malay Balay, and I hope and pray that your kind of dedicated service will be emulated by, by all the LGUs here in the province of Bukidnon. Congratulations, Agar, again, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, in connection. Doc, thank you so much, Doc, for giving your time to us before this distinguished body, in spite of your hectic schedule. But I just want to, I have only one question, Doc. Again, congratulations for receiving the Oral Health Award, twenty-two, twenty-five, so hoping for next year that you'll be in the top again. So for, we are going to get the goal for national. So, Doc, I know though that you have still a main challenges. So my question is, what are the, or main current challenges faced by the Oral Health Program in this, in this city?
Actually, with the current situation, Mr. Honorable Board Member Denlyan, is that there are still, especially with our dentist, there are still what we call illegal practices of the dentist, no? I mean, not the dentist, kada bitang mga, na pangibot lang, diligun sila, tinuod nga dentistha or dilisila license, no? That's one of the big challenges also. Not, I think, it's not only a challenge sa city, but I think in also in other places. So with that, amuna na siyang ipaabot, ngayon namigtabang dito sa Regional Health Office, no, para...
For policy support.
For policy support.
So thank you.
Alangan gagamitong, Doc, ketutpikra?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Pagka magkaproblema na sa mo dentistha, then wag padulong. Siya pagka infected na, tapos nanghubag na, andagoy.
Yes, yes.
Luhi kayo mga pasyente po.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
So I guess if there are no more questions to our guests, so I guess, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, we will, after all the recognitions are done, after all the questions, and atos lang, tagsatag sa on.
Okay, there is still another...
You still have another one, di ba?
Yes, for, for...
Thank you again, Dr. Sangalang.
Thank you, Doc.
We'll proceed with the recognition later. Yes, next?
Okay, next, Mr. Chairman. I am glad to invite, and I am going to introduce the Tourism City of Malay Balay Head, Sir Marvin Jan Nadella. This is in connection again for my commendation resolution, resolution commending and congratulating the City Government of Malay Balay and the Malay Balay City Tourism Office for being among the top three finalists in the Best of Promotions category for both Bronxure and Promotional Video at the prestigious Association of Tourism Officers of the Philippines. The Atop Pearl Awards Twenty-Twenty-Five. So, Sir Nadella, you may have the floor.
Mabuhay. Mabuhay, good afternoon. With utmost respect to this August body headed by our Vice Governor, Honorable Clive Kinyo, and to the rest of the members,
Welcome, sir.
and especially to our Board Member, Marlon Brando Denlyan. So it is my great honor and pleasure to announce that we got the grand prize for Best Promotional Video and second place, or second runner-up for the brochure competition. This is the first time that Malay Balay got the achievement, as well as for the province of Bukidnon. And we are just true to our promise with our tourism branding, Sakata Malay Balay, which highlights sports, agri-ecotourism, kultura, and adventure. And the recognition does not only focusing on the beauty of the city of Malay Balay, but the beauty of the province of Bukidnon as a whole. So we are thankful to the utmost support of this August body, to the Provincial Government of Bukidnon, and to our City Mayor for the utmost support and the, everything that he have been giving to our office. So we are very grateful for this recognition, thank you so much.
Congratulations, Sir Marvin. Then we are very proud of what you have done
Thank you, sir.
for your office. And then this is, this is a competition among tourism offices all over the country?
Yes, sir.
So where was this held?
At Baguio City, sir.
Baguio City?
Yes. So out of five hundred eighty-three entries, we got the first prize.
Congratulations, that's worth, congratulations, sir.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes, please.
I would like also to congratulate our, the City Mayor of Malay Balay, who is City Mayor Attorney Juwaring Pabiliaran. He is, he is here, because I invited him also.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, sir, he cannot be here. But he extends his heartfelt thanks to everyone for this recognition. He's in Upper Pulangi for a very equally important matter to attend.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much, sir. I have only, may I going to ask only one inquiry, Mr. Chairman? Okay, sir, do we have, do we have ongoing or planned programs to sustain and innovate tourism campaigns behind the awards? And see mga future na to mga top, top plan?
Yes, sir. So just like what I've said, sir, you know, so we're just true to our promise with our tourism branding, the Sakata Malay Balay branding, which is focuses, which focuses on sports, agri-ecotourism, kultura, and adventure. So all of our plans and all of our projects are aligned with these four assets of our city. So with the sustainable efforts, all of our plans and projects are, the sustainability efforts are being anchored through these efforts so that the next generation, the next future will still be able to experience what Malay Balay now, and we will be bringing that to the next generation as well.
Okay, thank you so much, sir. I guess, Mr. Chairman, so I guess that's all, if there are no more inquiries?
Thank you, sir. Continue to make us proud, continue to make Malay Balay be there at the, not just in the national scene, but in the global, no, tourism sites or tourism cities to visit. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next? Okay, so thank you so much, our City Tourism Head, Sir Marvin Jan Nadella, and as well as the City Health Officer of Malay Balay, Dr. Dennis P. Sangalang. Thank you for your appearance before this distinguished body. Congratulations once again.
Congratulations, sir. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I believe we have... Three more. Yes, so Majority Floor, would you like to...
Yes, for the last, for the resolution sponsored by the gentleman from the Second Legislative District, Mr. Chair, Honorable Board Member Bobby J. Denlyan. I think may we now recognize again, Mr. Chairman, for these two recognitions, two resolutions authored by Board Member Bobby J. Denlyan, our Secretary, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Secretary.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-Five-Due Four-One-Cero of the Twenty-Eight SP, a resolution congratulating and commending the Sakata Malay Balay team for the exceptional performance during the Twenty-Twenty-Five Regional Fire Olympics held in Oroketa City, Misamis Occidental, on August twenty-five to twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-five. Authored by Bobby J. Bedenlyan, Board Member, Second Legislative District, Province of Bukidnon. Whereas the Twenty-Twenty-Five Regional Fire Olympics Ultimate Firefighter Challenge held in Oroketa City, Misamis Occidental, and hosted by the Bureau of Fire Protection Region Ten, from August twenty-five to twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-five, gathered emergency responders, safety personnel, and firefighting teams from across Region Ten under the team Siguridad ng Buhay at Ari Arian Tulai sa Pag Asenso, to showcase their skills in firefighting, rescue operations, emergency response, and community preparedness. Whereas the Sakata Malay Balay team representing Malay Balay City was composed of personnel from the Bureau of Fire Protection, Malay Balay City Fire Station, the City Disasters Risk Reduction and Management Office, Malay Balay, and the City of Fire Auxiliary Group, Barangay Simaya. Whereas the, this remarkable performance brought honor and recognition not only the Bureau of Fire Protection, Malay Balay City Fire Station and its allied officers, but also the entire city of Malay Balay and the province of Bukidnon as it showcased excellence in public safety, preparedness, and emergency response. Wherefore, motion of Board Member Bobby J. Bedenlyan, and unanimously suggested by all Sanguniang Panlalawigan members present, insist unassembled, be resolved as it is hereby resolved, congratulating and commending the Sakata Malay Balay team for the exceptional performance during the Twenty-Twenty-Five Regional Fire Olympics held in Oroketa City, Misamis Occidental, on August twenty-five to twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-five. Result further that this capitol decision be furnished to the Sakata Malay Balay team, consisting Malay Balay City Fire Station, the CDRMO Malay Balay, the CFAAG, Barangay Simaya, and the Office of the City Mayor Warren Pabiliaran for their information and acknowledgement, unanimously approved by hereby certified. As to the correctness of the foregoing resolution, Attorney Apoli Magwalay, Secretary to the Sanguniang Panlalawigan, and attested by Honorable Clive D. Kinyo, Provincial Vice Governor, Presiding Officer. Another resolution, Mr. Chair?
Yes, but before that, Doc, we would like to ask any member of the Fire Olympics team nga makahatak uggamay nga... Okay, so to Fire Olympics, ba?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I believe.
Ang inyong team leader?
Some of them are present, Mr. Chair.
Introduce your team, on ya, on sa inyong himo, parang nga ma... Sa ilang place nila, winner? Regional winner? Regional Fire Olympics? Or naabang aton chief sa MDRMO, ah, CDRMO?
Yes, sir, good afternoon.
Yes, sir, good afternoon.
My highest respect to the August body headed by our Honorable Clive Kinyo, our Vice Governor.
Good afternoon, sir, welcome.
As well as the members of the Twenty-Eight SP, and to all participants, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
For and in behalf of the City Administrator and representing the City Mayor, I would like to express our heartfelt gratitude for recognizing the city of Malay Balay as one of the winners during the Two Thousand Twenty-five Regional Fire Olympics Contest at the Misamis, Oroketa City, Misamis Occidental.
Mr. Chair, for record purposes, we ask the name of the representative from the Administrator.
I am Mr. Rio Adam Opiala, Information Officer of the City Administrator's Office.
Thank you.
So who did you, pila kabukang nagparticipate ato, sir? Sa katung, kuwan, Fire Olympics, Regional Fire Olympics?
Actually, sir, I have no firsthand information because I am just a representative to receive this recognition, sir.
Ah, okay. Purnadiri, ang ato ang mga participants? Ah, wala, wala? Ah, wala, ah, okay. Ah, okay, okay, okay. So wala, sladiri?
Yes, sir.
Sayang. Sige, so thank you, sir. Thank you for the good job. Please extend our warm congratulations, no?
Thank you, sir.
To the, to the team. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir, it is honor.
Next?
Another resolution, Mr. Chair, Resolution Number... Resolution Number 2025-411 of the 28th SP. A resolution congratulating and commending the Kabuluhan Community Fire Auxiliary Group for emerging as overall champion in the CFAG category during the 2025 Regional Fire Olympics held in Oroketa City, Misamis Occidental, on August 25 to 27, 2025. Authored by Honorable Bobby J. B. Lion, Board Member Second Legislative District, Province Bukidnon. Whereas the Bureau of Fire Protection, Region 10 spearheaded the 2025 Regional Fire Olympics Ultimate Firefighter Challenge held in Oroketa City, Misamis Occidental, on August 25 to 27, 2025, gathered emergency responders, safety personnel, and firefighting team from across Region 10 under the team Siguridad ng Buhay at Ariarian Tulay sa Pagasenso to showcase their skills in firefighting, rescue operation, emergency response, and community preparedness. Whereas this remarkable achievement brings immense pride and honor not only to the municipality of Kabanglasan, but to the entire Province of Bukidnon, highlighting the group's commitment to fire safety, emergency preparedness, and public service. Wherefore, motion of Board Member Bobby J. B. Lion and unanimously secanded by all Sangunian Panalawigan members present, insist you unassemble, be resolved as it is hereby resolved, congratulating and commending the Kabuluhan Community Fire Auxiliary Group for emerging as overall champion in the CFAG category during the 2025 Regional Fire Olympics held in Oroketa City, Misamis Occidental, on August 25 to 27, 2025. Result further that this capisce of this resolution be furnished to the Kabuluhan Community Fire Auxiliary Group through the Office of the Municipal Mayor Bernice Castilianis for their information and appropriate action, uh, appropriate recognition. Approved unanimously, I hereby certify to the correctness of the foregoing resolution, Attorney Apoli Magwalis, Secretary to the Sangunian Panalawigan, and attested by Honorable Clive D. Kinney, Provincial Vice Governor, Presiding Officer.
May we ask the members of the, uh, Kabuluhan Community Fire Auxiliary Group, or CFAG, to please stand up? So let's give them a big hand, no? Congratulations. Naaba si kapitan or si kagawad? Oh, sir, please, uh, approach the hand.
May nga hapon, Mr. Chair, o sa, uh, dishonorable body. Uh, I am Charlie, uh, Kapita Punong Balangay, Charlie Castilianis, of Balangay Kabuluhan.
Congratulations, uh, kapitan, sir. Uh, for, uh... Preparing your team well para aning, uh, uh, ng event. So this was participated by, uh, pilakap, kwan, kap, pilakab, balangay?
This is, uh, provincial, uh, Fire Olympics, Mr. Chair. So, uh, sa Province of Bukidnon, ang Kabuluhan ang nag... Ang nagrepresent sa Province of Bukidnon ang Balangay Kabuluhan or ang CFAG sa Kabuluhan dahil lahipod ang sa city... Yeah, city category, lahipod ang sa organic na, uh, fire, uh... And, uh, lima, no? Only five provinces, uh...
Yes, there are only five provinces in call. Ay, no, unong kabuk ang province sa Region 10, di ba? Or lima? Misok, Misor, Bukidnon, Kamigin, Lalau del Norte?
Lalau del Norte.
Oh, so lima. Oh, so out of, oh, so out of anatanan, ang Balangay Kabuluhan ang nagdalaoga dungog.
Uh, good afternoon, uh, Honorable Clive Kinney, sir. Uh, Inspector Stella Sanchez of, uh, Municipal Fire Marshal of Kabanglasan Fire Station, uh, together with me, see, uh, Honorable, uh, Charlie Castilianis. Uh, Balangay Kabuluhan is the one representing the Ca- Community Fire Auxiliary Group of Province of Bukidnon. Uh, lahipod ang sa city nga category nga CFAG, moto ang Balangay, uh, sila, si- Simaya. First runner-up sila.
First runner-up? Not bad.
So overall, balin na kontrag, hapon na sila sa CFAG category. So sa Bukidnon, duha ka sa city, ang Valencia, uh, Malay Balay, pero wala nakapil ang Valencia only. Uh, Malay Balay din, ang Sakam- Kabuluhan, Kabanglasan is ang Province of Bukidnon ang ilang girepresent. So overall, uh, overall champion.
Oh, okay, kayo. Congratulations. So human naman sa region, so national na ni sunod?
Uh, National Fire Olympics will be held at Oroketa City this coming twenty, uh, March 2026.
Ah, so at least dira sa mindanaw?
Yes, oh.
Dira kay mabunog si kapitan?
Sponsored by, uh...
Sa malilali, nakugigasto.
So sponsored by, uh, Governor Waminal of Asenso, Misok.
Asenso, Misok, okay. So congratulations again, kapitan, especially to your team, no, for making Bukidnon proud and we wish you the best, all the best sa kanin national na'to nga Fire Olympics competition. Congratulations and, uh, mabuhay kayo, mamansers. Next?
I think we have last resolution, Mr. Chair. Again, in the absence of our, uh, ISKE President, Mr. Chair, Honorable Rialu Lina, so may we again recognize our Secretary, Attorney Magwalis.
Yes, Attorney Magwalis, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Majority Pro Leader. Resolution Number 2025-417, uh, of the 28th SP, passed during the end, the 13th Regular Session. A resolution commending the Malay Balay Social Dinkers for hosting Panag Tigi, the Bukidnon Foundation Day Invitational Pickleball Tournament. Authored by Honorable Rialu Estlinas, Board Member, PPSK President, Province of Bukidnon. Whereas the Province of Bukidnon joyously commemorates its founding anniversary each year through activities that celebrate the rich history, diverse culture, and unity of its people while showcasing progress, development, and community spirit. Whereas sports events from the inte- an integral part of these festivities, fostering healthy competition camaraderie, and promotion of physical and mental well-being among citizens from various municipalities and cities across the province. Whereas recognizing the growing popularity of pickleball both nationally and globally, the Malay Balay Social Dinkers, a community-based organization dedicated to the promotion and development of pickleball in Bukidnon, took the initiative to organize Panag Tigi, the Bukidnon Foundation Day Invitational Pickleball Tournament. Panag Tigi 2025, in celebration of Bukidnon 111th foundation anniversary, was successfully held at the Bukidnon Sports Complex in Lagitas, Malay Balay City, Bukidnon, on August 30, 31, 2025, gathering athletes into chest and supported from different sectors and areas. Whereas the 28th Sangunian Panalawigan of Bukidnon commenced the Malay Balay Social Dinkers for their invaluable contribution in hosting Panag Tigi, the Bukidnon Foundation Day Invitational Pickleball Tournament in recognition of their leadership, dedication, and vision in promoting athletic development, community spirit, and provincial pride. Therefore, motion of Board Member Leah, Rialu Estlinas, and unanimously secanded by all Sangunian Panalawigan members present, insist you unassemble, be resolved as it is hereby resolved, commending the Malay Balay Social Dinker for hosting Panag Tigi, the Bukidnon Foundation Day Invitational Pickleball Tournament. I hereby, uh, certify to the correctness of the foregoing resolution, Attorney Apoli Magwalis, Secretary to the Sangunian Panalawigan, and attested by Honorable Clive D. Kinney, Provincial Vice Governor, Presiding Officer.
Yes, uh, is, uh, Mr. George Legumbay Jr. here? Ah, there you are, sir. Um, Malay Balay, one time nasayip na butang social drinker ilang nabutang. Actually, this is dinker, di ba? So... Gires ang ar. Eh, ko nga ding, social drinker. Buting Panag Tigi, the Bukidnon Foundation Day Invitational, uh, Pickleball. So this is, uh, arguably the, uh, fastest-growing sport, not just in the country, but around the world, right, sir?
Yes, sir. Yes, Honorable. Yes.
Yes, uh, and then, uh, even when my wife caught the virus, on ya, nga mong budiga, imbesa butangan, oh, mais, di na maputangan, kaya lang imo ano kwan, court, pickleball court. So that's how, uh, addictive and viral this sport is. So congratulations, sirs. Uh, sir, thank you for, um, your, uh, your contribution. Parang nga mo dakunin ang sport, deris Lalawigan sa Bukidnon. Uh, and in fact, no, uh, two players from Manolo Fortiz won internationally, no, sa, sa Thailand. Uh, yeah, gikan sila dito sa Thailand, dun ya, dahil nagchampion sila dito, uh, sa Thailand, uh, from Manolo Fortiz, ang pickleball. So it's, it's, it's really, this is really growing fast. Even the governor can be seen already playing gani, pickleball.
Oh, yes.
And some of the mayors, no?
Yes, yes, Vice.
Uh, wala pa. Wala pa. Wala. 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 Piko sa kadahawid, ogpadul, ano? Uh, but maybe, siguro, uh, because of this, no, masin makakwan ako. Mahawid na ko, ogpadul git siguro, na matistinta. So, sir, uh, what are your future plans for, uh, the pickleball, for the sport in the Province of Bukidnon?
So, good afternoon. Good afternoon, honorable members of Sangunian Panalawigan, provincial officials, and fellow guests. Our plans for next year is to organize three big tournaments also. So with your help, we will help host and organize the large pickleball tournaments next year here in Bukidnon.
I was able to speak with, uh, Attorney Romel Rocken. He said, uh, sa kamulan daw, it will be a national, kwan daw, a national competition?
Yes, Po.
Is that right?
Yes, yes, Vice.
Uh, so you have, uh, a lot on your plate, no, nga... Pagorganize ala.
Together with our, um, other clubs of Bukidnon, we're gonna partner up also with, uh, with other clubs.
Yeah, so since, uh, comment sa akin, dakumangin siya nga sport, no? And I hope nga, we will, uh, support each other, no? Uh, diliingon nga, Malay Balay, Malay Balay lang, or Valencia, Valencia lang, ano, no?
Yes.
Uh, so I will invite you also to the first, uh, RQ, uh, smash ending in Manolo Fortiz, organized by my commander.
Yes.
Hope you will bring your players there.
She actually played there in our courts last time.
Yeah, 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 yeah. She, she plays all around, kwan lah, Bukidnon. So we're very happy for that, no? And then, uh, and gani, moragapangabot ang mga kwan, no? Um, mga taga, even as far as Bohol, Cebu, no? Ga pangkwan sila, ga panulong sila sa kwan, di sa Bukidnon.
Oo, bisit sila.
Oh.
Oo.
Huh?
Heavy Dinkers.
Heavy, heavy Dinkers, pwede, pwede. Iyanat lang ang R. Okay. So, sir, we will, we look forward, no, to many more tournaments uh, organized by the Malay Balay Social Dinkers?
Yes.
Uh, and, uh, we are optimistic that this sport will grow even more and will, uh, uh, will become a part of the, kwan gan, of the mainstream, no, nga sport, deris atong Lalawigan sa Bukidnon, which will also be, will also help the youth. Ado no kung apil na bonis siya sa kwan? Uh, is this a sport, uh, recognized or part of the palaro na karoon, or wala pa?
So, uh, as far as I know, wala pa. Wala pa, wala pa naaapil sa palaro. But I think it's an upcoming sport, so maybe in the future, maapil na siya sa palaro.
Yeah, yeah. Tanong ako, di delete layo, delete layo nga maapil siya tungod sa ka very popular na giniya karoon, not just here, but, you know. Like I said, all over the world, di ba? Dula laong pickleball, agan kayo.
Dakha na bito. Yes.
So congratulations, sirs.
Thank you.
And bam, no, sa, we wish you well and then, uh, hopefully, no, mas mo daghan paget ang mo dula aning ang sport. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Vice, Vice Cup.
Any other members who would like to, kwan, si, basing moragadula lang pickleball, panasi majority?
Mr. Chair, I think we are done with the five, no? Ato ang mga resolutions. So can we have the, 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 the photo opportunity?
Yes, please, uh, tong formal turnover? Yeah, the formal turnover? Isa, isa, and then, talan din.
Okay.
Would like to ask the members?
The first to receive is our guest from the City Health Office, led by Doctor Sanggallan.
...
Session is resumed? Majority floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we are done with our question, our honorable Presiding Officer. So, we will now proceed with our, uh, second reading, because we have no item tailored in the unfinished business, Mr. Chairman, for item number one and two by this representation, and item number one, two, and three, Mr. Chairman, by this representation, Honorable Presiding Officer? Thank you. For item number one, Mr. Chairman, this is a committee report in the Committee on Rules and Privileges, to which was, uh, endorsed, referred illiter of endorsement dated September twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five, with attachment of Engineer Jeselebi Mongobat, the Provincial Planning Development Coordinator of the Civil Society Organization, the Provincial Planning Development Office of this province relative to the set of requirements for the CISO accreditation. This is pertinent documents submitted by the Mindanao Junior Golfers Association Incorporated, with an organization address located at Tiklum, Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon, signifying the intent to apply for civil society organization accreditation. For this matter, Mr. Chairman, it has been already reviewed by the Provincial Planning Development Coordinator, Mr. Chairman, the Civil Society Organization Desk of the Provincial Planning Development Office, Mr. Chair. So, the committee determined that the Mindanao Junior Golfers Association Incorporated adheres completely to all the requirements for the application for civil society organization accreditation as per DILG Memorandum Circular Number Twenty-Twenty-Five-Das-Zero-Six-Zero. Thus, this committee, after judicial full deliberation and study, hereby recommends for the approval of Mindanao Junior Golfers Association Incorporated for the application of, for civil society organization accreditation as per DILG MC Twenty-Twenty-Five-Das-Zero-Six-Zero, located at Tiklum, Manolo Fortiche, Province, Bukidnon, for being proper in order and within the scope of the Sangunian to enact, recommended for the approval and adoption of this committee report, Mr. Chair.
Objections, comments, there being none, motion is approved.
For item number two, Mr. Chairman, this is joint committee report of the Committee Environmental Protection, Climate Change Disaster Prevention and Rules and Privileges, to which was also referred illiter endorsement dated September twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, with attachment of Roheyo Neil Pierokey, the Provincial Governor of this province relative to the Joint Resolution Number Eighteen-Das-Twenty-Twenty-Five, approving and adapting the proposed Bukidnon Local Biodiversity Strategy and Action Plan and endorsing the resolution to the Sangunian Panlawigan and Regional Development Council for support and approval. Have considered the same, hereby submit the findings, comments, and recommendations. The committee recommends for the approval and adoption of the proposed Bukidnon Local Biodiversity Strategy and Action Plan and endorsement of the corresponding resolution to the Sangunian Panlawigan and Regional Development Council, Region Ten, RDC Region Ten, for support and final approval. The LB SAP serves as a comprehensive framework to guide the province, to guide the province in conserving its rich biodiversity, promoting sustainable land use and integrating the ecosystem-based approaches into a local development planning. It aligns with the Philippine Biodiversity Strategy and Action Plan and supports the national-international commitments to environmental protection and climate resilience. Through this plan, Bukidnon aims to strengthen the local capacities, engage stakeholders, and implement the targeted actions that preserve critical habitats, protect endemic species, promote ecological integrity. The committee recognizes the urgency of biodiversity conservation amid increasing threats from land conversion, pollution, and climate change. Enshrined in Section Forty-One, Republic Act of Eleven-Five-One-Eight, or the General Appropriation Act of Twenty-Twenty-One, on the Protection of Biodiversity Executive Order Number Twenty-Seven, directing all the government agencies, instrumentalities, and local government units to implement the Philippine Development Plan Twenty-Twenty-Seven to Twenty-Thirty-Two, the DNR Administrative Order Twenty-Sixteen-Das-Twelve, adapting the Philippine Biodiversity Strategy and Action Plan of Twenty-Fifteen to Twenty-Twenty-Eight, DNR Memorandum Circular Twenty-Sixteen-Das-Seven-Four-Five, on the integration of biodiversity in planning implementation and monitoring development projects, the Tenure Instrument issued by the DNR and the DNR Biodiversity Management Bureau, the Technical Bulletin Number Twenty-Twenty-One-Das-Zero-Five, providing the guidance of preparing the LB SAP. Recommendation, the committee after careful review hereby comments for the approval of the joint resolution numbers Eighteen-Das-Twenty-Twenty-Five, approving and adapting the proposed Bukidnon Local Biodiversity Strategy and Action Plan and endorsing this resolution to the Sangunian Panlawigan and the Regional Development Council, RDC Ten, for support and approval for being proper in order and within the scope of the Sangunian to enact. So, recommended for the approval and adoption of this committee report, Mr. Chair.
Objections, comments, if there are none, motion is approved.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer, for item number three, again, in the absence of the chairman of the committee, Mr. Chair. As requested by this representation to report in behalf of the committee, this is joint committee report on engineering and public works and on rules and privileges, to which was referred Committee Report Number Twenty-Twenty-Five-Das-Five, the Zero-Zero-Three of the Twenty-Eight SP, and Committee Report Number Twenty-Twenty-Five-Das-R, Zero-One-Five of the Twenty SP, to which was referred illiter dated September twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five from the Provincial Governor Roheyo Neil Pierokey and the chairperson of the Provincial Development Council, the Provincial Peace and Order Council, Provincial Health Board, Provincial School Board, Provincial Anti-Drug Abuse Council, and the Provincial Disaster Resuduction Management Council, endorsing to this August body Resolution Number Thirteen-Das-Twenty-Twenty-Five entitled, supporting, endorsing to the construction of the Judiciary Building at Provincial Capital Compound, Barangay Nine, City of Malay Balay, within the premises of the lot owned by the Provincial Government of Bukidnon, and request for funding of this said project from the National Government. Have considered the same, hereby submit the findings, comments, and recommendations to the committee. The committee finds that Resolution Number Thirteen-Das-Twenty-Twenty-Five indicates that the province of Bukidnon currently has five regional trial courts handling between three hundred and one thousand cases each annually, thereby evidencing the need for additional judicial facilities within the province. This circumstance underscores the necessity of endorsing, supporting the proposed judiciary building to ensure the efficient administration of justice and facilitate the greater access thereto. The establishment of the judiciary building within the Provincial Capital Compound, Barangay Nine, City of Malay Balay, the property owned by the Provincial Government of Bukidnon, is deemed essential to streamline court administration, enhance case management, improve the public service delivery. In this regard, the committee emphasized that both the endorsement and financial support from the National Government are essential to ensure the successful implementation of the project. In view, the foregoing committees find the resolution proper and meritorious for approval and adoption. Recommendation, the committees after careful review hereby recommend for the approval of the endorsement by the Provincial Governor Roheyo Neil Pierokey, Resolution Number Thirteen-Das-Twenty-Twenty-Five, as supported by the Provincial Development Council, Provincial Peace and Order Council, the Provincial Health Board, Provincial School Board, Provincial Anti-Drug Abuse Council, and the Provincial Disaster Resuduction Management Council, and the adoption of the resolution. So, moving for the approval and adoption of this committee report, Mr. Chair.
Objections, comments, if there being none, motion is approved.
Honorable Presiding Officer, proceeding to item number four, five, two sixteen. We now recognize the gentleman coming from the Second District, the Honorable Board Member Attorney, Holis Simontanto, Mr. Chair.
The Honorable Monsanto is recognized, go ahead, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Majority Floor Leader. As to item number four, this is supposed to be a joint committee report, the Committee on Laws, this is rather a joint committee report on the Committee on Laws, Justice and Human Rights, and on Rules and Privileges. In the absence of the chairman of the Committee on Laws, the undersigned being the Vice Chairman is making this report. The Committee on Laws, Justice and Human Rights, and on Rules and Privileges, to which was referred illiter dated September twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, from Provincial Governor Roheyo Neil Pierokey and chairperson of the Provincial Development Council, Provincial Peace and Order Council, Provincial Health Board, Provincial School Board, Provincial Anti-Drug Abuse Council, and the Provincial Disaster Rest and Reduction Management Council, endorsing to the August body Joint Resolution Number Eleven-Das-Twenty-Twenty-Five entitled, a resolution approving the proposed list of public-private partnership projects for inclusion in the development plans and investment programs of the Provincial Government of Bukidnon and for endorsement to the Sangunian Panlawigan, Regional Development Council, Department of Economy, Planning and Development, the DEB, and the PPP Center of the Philippines. Have considered the same, the joint committee have considered the same, and hereby submit their findings, comments, and recommendations. As to the findings, the Provincial Government of Bukidnon promotes transparency and collaboration through public-private partnership initiatives to accelerate infrastructure development, optimize public resources, and attract private investments. The Joint Resolution Number Eleven-Das-Twenty-Twenty-Five, according to Republic Act Eleven-Nine-Six-Six, aligns projects with the national and local development frameworks to strengthen public-private collaboration for sustainable growth. These priority PPP projects were identified. They integrated both water system and ecotourism development in Malay Balay City, the Bukidnon Food Hub in Manolo Fortiche, and the Bukidnon Highland Township Project in Malay Balay City. These projects are recommended for integration into the province development and investment program through formal PPP arrangement. In view of the foregoing, finds the resolution, the committee finds the resolution valid, proper, and in order for approval. As to the recommendations, the committees after careful review hereby recommend the approval of the endorsement by the Provincial Governor Roheyo Neil Pierokey of Resolution Number Eleven-Das-Twenty-Twenty-Five, as endorsed by the Provincial Development Council, Provincial Peace and Order Council, Provincial Health Board, Provincial School Board, Provincial Anti-Drug Abuse Council, and the Provincial Disaster Rest and Reduction Management Council, and the adoption of a resolution. So, moving for the approval of the same, Mr. Chair.
Objections, comments, if there are none, motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
When proceeding to the joint committee reports on the Committee on Appropriations and on Rules and Privileges, first, uh, is the referred proposed ordinance number fourteen-Das-Twenty-Twenty-Five, with a Twenty-Eight SP, series of twenty-twenty-five. This is authored by the Honorable Board Member Anol Focusi Junior ZP Pito, Board Member of the Fourth Legislative District, Province of Bukidnon, entitled, and ordinance amending ordinance number twenty-two-five-Das-Zero-Zero-Three-R of the Twenty-Eight SP, entitled, and ordinance amending also ordinance number twenty-two-three-Das-Zero-Four-Five-Das-R of the Twenty-Seventh SP, on the grant of financial assistance to support the deserving and qualified medical students and the integration program of the doctors in Bukidnon and appropriating funds thereof. The committees have considered the same and do hereby, do hereby submit their findings, comments, and recommendations. The proposed amendatory ordinance seeks to revise specific provisions of ordinance number twenty-two-five-Das-Zero-Zero-Three-R of the Twenty-Eight SP to expand the grant of financial assistance to deserving and qualified medical students and strengthen the integration program for future doctors in the province of Bukidnon. The legislative measures align with Article Two, Section Fifteen of Nineteen Eighty-seven Philippine Constitution, which provides, "The state shall protect and promote the right to health of the people and instill health consciousness among them." It is likewise consistent with Article Two, Section Seventeen, which states, "The state shall give priority to education, science, and technology, arts, cultures, and sports to foster patriotism and nationalism, accelerate social progress, and promote total human liberation and development." In addition, the ordinance support the principles set forth in Republic Act Eleven-Five-Zero-Nine, otherwise known as the Doctor Para Sabayan Act of Twenty-Twenty, which outlines the general framework for establishing medical scholarship and return service program nationwide. During the committee meeting, these are the amendments discussed, and the following sections of ordinance number twenty-two-five-Das-Zero-Zero-Three-R are hereby amended as follows. Section Three, the composition of the PGB Scholarship Committee. Additional phrase shall be added, "The secretary to the Sangunian shall serve as the secretariat of the committee, who shall be joined by designated personnel from the concerned committee members." And additional provisions shall be incorporated and designated as Section Five, Rules and Functions of the Secretariat, which shall... which shall read as follows. The rules and functions of the secretariat, this is Section 5 of the amendment. The secretariat shall be responsible for preparing the meetings, managing information, implementing decisions made by the committee, coordinating with all the parties, managing correspondence, and preparing reports. The secretariat shall also be responsible for safekeeping all the documents related to the implementation of this program. Section 6, the coverage of the medical scholarship program, subsection B and C shall be amended to read as follows. For subsection B, for first year to fourth year scholars, book allowance, board enlarging allowance, uniform allowance. For subsection C, for fifth year, the intern, the board enlarging allowance, and physician licensure exam, review, and application fee. As to section 7, qualifications of the scholars, sub-paragraph B, I, and K shall be amended and read as follows, to which, for sub-paragraph B, must be 30 years old or younger upon application. For sub-paragraph I, must have obtained 80 or above score on the INMAT in the LGU-identified partner government institution. And on sub-paragraph K, must have the passing score of at least 75% with the following criteria: Transcript of records, 50% rating, INMAT 30% rating, family income 10% rating, interview 10% rating for a total of 100% rating. An additional provision shall be included in the same section stating, "Family income shall be assessed based on the prescribed family income for Bukidnon as published on the Philippine Statistical Authority website." An additional provision shall be incorporated and designated as Section 8, Documentary Requirements, which shall read as follows. Section 8, as to the documentary requirements, the applicant must submit the following documentary requirements upon application: A clear copy of duly issued birth certificate by the PSA, authenticated copy of college transcript of records and diploma, certified true copy of the latest income tax return of the applicant's parents or guardian if applicable, certified true copy of the certificate of general weight average, and the authenticated INMAT result, certificate of good moral character, barangay certificate of residency, certificate of acceptance or enrollment from a college of medicine, and a letter of intent. Further, Section 9, the screening and selection process. In sub-paragraph 2, the word eligible shall be changed to aspiring. As to Section 11, part also of the amendments, grounds for suspension and revocation of the scholarship grant, the provision regarding termination shall be changed and read as follows. Termination, whether voluntary or involuntary, shall result in repayment of the scholar of the full scholarship benefits received, including all expenses incurred during participation in the scholarship program. The mode of payment may be outright or in installment, subject to the approval of the committee. As to Section 13, mandatory return service, the phrase "fails to pass the PLA" shall be changed to "fails to finish the course or fails to pass the PLA." Section 14, the sources of funds, the provision shall be changed and read as follows. The provincial government shall allocate funds necessary for the implementation of this ordinance and shall be included in the annual budget. As to Section 16, Effectivity clause, the provision shall also be changed and read as follows. This ordinance shall take effect upon approval of its implementing rules and regulations. As to the recommendations, the committees after due deliberation hereby recommend for the approval of the proposed ordinance Number 014-2025 of the 28 SB, Series of 2025, authored by Ranolfo C. Junior Z. Pito, Board Member, Fourth Legislative District, Province of Bukidnon, for being proper, in order, and within the competence of the Sanguinang Palalawigan DUNA. So recommended, Mr. Chair.
objections, comments, if there are none, motion is approved.
May I ask, Mr. Chair, as to the author, if there are any other statement which he's going to make?
Honorable Pito?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to thank the committees, especially the chairman of the Committee on Appropriations, for handling the certain amendments for this proposed ordinance, and thankful for all the members of the Sanguinang Palalawigan, Mr. Chair. This would address the, actually mainly the funding source of the, funding appropriations of the said ordinance, and other provisions such as the attorney Monsanto gave, Mr. Chair. So, that's all, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to thank the committees and all the rest of the members of the Sanguinang. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Pito.
May I continue, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please proceed, Honorable Monsanto.
The next item under the Committee on Appropriations, Committee Report, to which was referred ordinance Number 19-2025, Series of 2025, approved on September 17, 2025, the Sanguinang Bayan of Cebanglasan Bukidnon, entitled, an ordinance providing for a hazard pay, assistance allowance, and laundry allowance to the veterinarian of the local government unit of Cebanglasan to take effect on January 1, 2025, as per findings and recommendations of the Provincial Local Finance Committee, chargeable to calendar year 2025 annual budget of the LGU. The committee have considered the same and hereby submit their findings, comments, and recommendations. As to the findings, upon review, the local finance committee recommends its approval, subject to the passage of supplemental budget in accordance with Section 447, Paragraph A and Paragraph 11 of RS 2160, which states, "Granting honorary allowances and other emoluments to officials and employees holding position to a highly technical or primarily confidential nature when so deemed justified by the Sanguinang." As to the recommendations, the committee after review hereby recommend for the approval of ordinance Number 19-2025, Series of 2025, approved on September 17, 2025, the Sanguinang Bayan of Cebanglasan Bukidnon, for being proper, in order, and within the competence of the Sanguinang Bayan concerned to pass. So recommended, Mr. Chair.
objections, comments, if there are none, motion is approved.
Next is ordinance Number 2025-123 of the 10th Regular Session, approved on September 22, 2025, the Sanguinang Bayan of Imbasugong Bukidnon, entitled, and ordinance allocating funds for the annual celebration of the founding anniversary of Imbasugo. As to the findings, upon review, the local finance committee recommends its approval, subject to the passage of the supplemental budget in accordance with Section 447, Paragraph A, Paragraph 11 of RS 2160, which has already been read and discussed. And as to the recommendations, the committee after review hereby recommend for the approval of ordinance Number 2025-123 of the 10th Regular Session, approved on September 22, 2025, of the Sanguinang Bayan of Imbasugong Bukidnon, for being proper, in order, and within the competence of the Sanguinang Bayan concerned to pass. So recommended, Mr. Chair.
objections, comments, if there are none, motion is approved.
Next is ordinance Number 12, Series of 2025, enacted on September 8, 2025, the Sanguinang Bayan of Kibawi Bukidnon, entitled, and ordinance providing incentives for local athletes in the municipality of Kibawi Bukidnon. As to the findings, the ordinance aims to provide incentives to the local athletes for local athletes in the municipality of Kibawi Bukidnon. Upon review, the local finance committee emphasizes that the proposed incentive must adhere to and align with Article 2, Section 17 of the 1987 Philippine Constitution, which states, "The state shall give priority to education, science, and technology, arts, culture, and sports to foster patriotism and nationalism, accelerate social progress, and promote total human liberation and development." Thus, the committee after review hereby recommend for the approval of ordinance Number 12, Series of 2025, enacted on September 8, 2025, of the Sanguinang Bayan of Kibawi Bukidnon, for being proper, in order, and within the competence of the Sanguinang Bayan concerned to pass. So recommended, Mr. Chair.
objections, comments, if there are none, motion is approved.
Next is ordinance Number 006, Series of 2025, enacted September 15, 2025, the Sanguinang Bayan of Pangatukan Bukidnon, entitled, and ordinance granting incentives to resident couple celebrating their golden anniversary, 50 years, in the municipality of Pangatukan Bukidnon. Upon review, the local finance committee finds that the LGUs are vested with the authority to enact ordinance on the exercise of their general welfare powers, general welfare powers, provided that the same are not inconsistent with existing laws. The ordinance is found to be consistent with the intent and spirit of the law and does not contravene any of its provisions, subject to the availability of funds and compliance with the existing vegetarian, accounting, and auditing rules and regulations. Thus, the committee after review hereby recommend for the approval of ordinance Number 006, Series of 2025, enacted on September 15, 2025, the Sanguinang Bayan of Pangatukan Bukidnon, for being proper, in order, and within the competence of the Sanguinang Bayan concerned to pass. So recommended, Mr. Chair.
objections, comments, if there are none, motion is approved.
Next is ordinance Number 007, Series of 2025, enacted on September 15, 2025, the Sanguinang Bayan of Pangatukan Bukidnon, entitled, and ordinance providing a monthly honorarium to the president of the municipal federation of persons with disability and the president of barangay persons with the Disability Association in the municipality of Pangatukan Bukidnon. Upon review, as to the findings, upon review, the local finance committee finds that the grant of monthly honorarium to the president of the municipal federation of persons with disability is consistent with Section 31, Republic Act Number 7277, otherwise known as the Magna Carta for Disabled Persons. However, the extension of the same to the president of the barangay persons with disability association must take into account the fiscal autonomy of the barangays and shall be allowed only upon execution of the written agreement designated them to perform functions that directly support the municipal PWD programs such as coordination, monitoring, or project implementation. Under these conditions, the honorarium may be validly charged to the municipal funds. The ordinance shall likewise be implemented pursuant to Republic Act 7277, as amended by Republic Act Numbers 9442 and 10070, and Batas Papansa Bilang 344, subject to the availability of funds and compliance with the existing vegetarian, accounting, and auditing rules and regulations. Thus, the committee after review hereby recommend for the approval of ordinance Number 007, Series of 2025, of the Sanguinang Bayan of Pangatukan Bukidnon, subject to compliance with the foregoing requirements. So recommended, Mr. Chair.
objections, comments, if there are none, motion is approved.
Next is ordinance Number 008, Series of 2025, enacted on September 15, 2025, of the Sanguinang Bayan of Pangatukan Bukidnon, entitled, and ordinance providing support, funding, for the conduct of all indigenous peoples' festivals and rituals in the municipality of Pangatukan Bukidnon. As to the findings, the local finance committee finds this subject ordinance designates the municipal tourism officer as the office responsible for implementing its provision. However, upon review of the annual budget for calendar year 2025, no such office was found to exist. The local government unit is therefore advised to amend the provision to reflect the appropriate office or council that shall oversee the implementation of the ordinance. The allocation of funds by the LGU in support of the conduct of the indigenous peoples' festivals and rituals is consistent with Republic Act 8371 and does not contravene any of its provisions, provided that such activities are undertaken subject to the availability of funds and in accordance with the existing budget, accounting, and auditing rules and regulations. Thus, the committee after review hereby recommend for the approval of ordinance Number 008, Series of 2025, of the Sanguinang Bayan of Pangatukan Bukidnon, provided that the designated implementing office is duly corrected and that all provisions are implemented in accordance with the existing vegetarian, accounting, and auditing rules and regulations. So recommended, Mr. Chair.
objections, comments, if there are none, motion is approved.
Next is Resolution Number 139-2025, the 16th Sanguinang Bayan, Third Special Session, dated September 22, 2025, the Sanguinang Bayan of San Fernando Bukidnon, entitled, "A Resolution Approving and Adapting the Supplemental Investment Program, Number 2 of the Municipality of San Fernando Bukidnon in the amount of 23,436,194 pesos and 7 centavos." Upon review of the resolution submitted by the local government unit of San Fernando Bukidnon, the provincial planning and development office found that the Resolution Number 139-2025 of the 16th Sanguinang Bayan aligns with the planned activities of the LGU San Fernando. It was also found to be in order and in compliance with the prescribed planning procedures. Thus, the committee after review hereby recommend for the approval of Resolution Number 139-2025 of the 16th Sanguinang Bayan, Third Special Session, dated September 22, 2025, the Sanguinang Bayan of San Fernando Bukidnon, for being proper, in order, and within the competence of the Sanguinang Bayan concerned to pass. So recommended.
objections, comments, if there are none, motion is approved.
Next is ordinance Number 047, approved on August 19, 2025, of the Sanguinang Bayan of Sumila Bukidnon, entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Proposed Barrowing of the Municipality of Sumila, Province of Bukidnon in the amount of 100 million pesos, only, to finance the acquisition of land and construction of school, building, and other facilities." After a thorough review by the local finance committee, it was found that such ordinance is pursuant to Republic is pursuant to Section 297 of Republic Act 7160. The ordinance is within and in accordance with the provision of its implementing rules and regulations. Hence, the local finance committee recommends its approval as it is subject to compliance with all applicable budgeting, accounting, and auditing laws. Thus, the committee after review hereby recommend for the approval of ordinance Number 047, approved on August 19, 2025, the Sanguinang Bayan of Sumila Bukidnon, for being proper, in order, and within the competence of the Sanguinang Bayan concerned to pass. So recommended.
objections, comments, if there are none, motion is approved.
Next is ordinance Number 2 to 2024-32 of the 16th SB, approved on December 27, 2024, of the Sanguinang Bayan of Kadingilan Bukidnon, entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing Supplemental Budget Number 2 for Fiscal Year 2024 of the Local Government Unit of Kadingilan Bukidnon in the total amount of 10,588,215 pesos and 70 centavos." As to the findings, the appropriation ordinance was referred to the provincial budget office for review on April 4, 2025. Upon evaluation, it was disclosed that the amount of 243,979 pesos and 97 centavos sourced from the 20% local development fund was utilized for the payment of back honorarium. Such utilization is not in accordance with the provision of Section 287 of Republic Act 7160 and DBM, DOF, DILG, memorandum circular number 1, dated November 4, 2020, which mandate that not less than 20% of the national tax allotment be appropriated and utilized exclusively for development projects. Furthermore, the charging of personal services expenditure against the LDF is expressly prohibited. Hence, the appropriate adjustment must be made to ensure compliance with the existing vegetarian and legal requirements. In the light of these circumstances, the provincial budget office respectfully refers appropriation ordinance Number 2024-32 of the 16th SB back to the concerned LGU for appropriate action to ensure compliance with the legal and vegetarian requirements. Thus, the committee after review hereby recommended appropriation ordinance Number 2024-32 of the 16th SB, approved on December 27, 2024, the Sanguinang Bayan of Kadingilan Bukidnon, be referred back to its origins for compliance with aforementioned findings. So recommended, Mr. Chair.
objections, comments, if there are none, motion is approved.
Next is appropriation ordinance Number 2025-04 of the 17th SB, 7th Regular Session, approved on September 8, 2025, of the Sanguinang Bayan of Kadingilan Bukidnon, entitled, "An Ordinance for the Augmentation of Funds from the Trust Fund for Calendar Year 2023, under the 30% allocation amounting to 1,374,884 pesos and 10 centavos to be used for the maintenance of the operation center and rescue vehicles." Upon review, the local finance committee finds that a resolution from LDRRMC recommending the augmentation of funds from the trust fund, which provides compliance and clear legal basis for the use of the funds, was not attached to the ordinance. Thus, the committee after review hereby recommend that appropriation ordinance Number 2025-04 of the 17th SB, 7th Regular Session, approved on September 8, 2025, of the Sanguinang Bayan of Kadingilan Bukidnon, be referred back to its origins for compliance with aforementioned findings. So recommended, Mr. Chair.
objections, comments, if there are none, motion is approved.
Last is ordinance Number 25-9, approved on September 17, 2025, the Sanguinang Bayan of Libuna Bukidnon, entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Augmentation of Beds and Awards Committee Procurement Amounting to 25,000 pesos." As to the findings, upon review, the local finance committee finds that as of this date, the statement of appropriations, allotment, obligations, and balances for the period ending August 31, 2025, has not been submitted as a reference for the proposed augmentation of funds. Thus, the committee after review hereby recommend that ordinance Number 25-9, approved on September 17, 2025, the Sanguinang Bayan of Libuna Bukidnon, be referred back to its origins for compliance with aforementioned findings. So recommended, Mr. Chair.
objections, comments, if there are none, motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Monsanto. You can now rest.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Proceeding to items number 17 and 18.
Please proceed, sir.
May we now recognize, Mr. Chairman, the Honorable Board Member, Dr. G. Pito, of the Fourth Legislative District.
Honorable Pito, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item Number 17 and 18 under second reading. It's a joint committee report on Committees on Health and Rules and Privileges, Mr. Chair. For item Number 17, this is ordinance Number 103-2024 from the Sanguinang For item Number 17, this is ordinance Number 103-2024, from the Sanggunyang Bayan of San Fernando Bukinon, entitled, "An Ordinance Adapting Republic Act Number 11148", otherwise known as an act scaling up the national and local health and nutrition programs through a strengthened, integrated strategy for maternal, neonatal, and child health and nutrition in the first, uh, first thousand, 1,000 days of life, appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes, or otherwise known as kalusugan ng magnanay act. And item Number 18 is ordinance Number 104, D2024, from the Sanggunyang Bayan, State of San Fernando Bukinon, entitled, "An Ordinance Adapting RA Number 10152", known as Implementation of Basic Immunization Services for Infants and Children in the Municipality of San Fernando Bukinon. Mr. Chair, would like to make an omnibus motion to defer these two items for further study in the committee, Mr. Chair. So move.
Injections, comments, if there being none, motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Pipito.
Mr. Chairman, proceeding to Item Number 20, 19 and 20, may we now recognize a gentleman from the 3rd Legislative District, Honorable Board Member, Menderba Casinabe.
Honorable Casinabe is recognized, go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Majority Floor Leader. The, Mr. Chairman, the Committees on Education and Rules and Privileges, to which was referred ordinance Number 256, Series of 2025, on the 16th ISB, enacted on September 15, 2025, of the Sanggunyang Bayan of Lantapan Bukinon, entitled, "An Ordinance Establishing a Sustainable Merit-Based Financial Assistance Program for Honored Students of the Bachelor of Science in Tourism Management at Bukinon State University, Lantapan Campus." Have considered the same and hereby submit their findings, comments, and recommendations. Findings, this ordinance seeks to establish a sustainable merit-based financial assistance program for honored students of the BSTM program at Boxo, Lantapan Campus is a promising policy instrument. It aligns strategic academic support with the institutional growth incentives, high performance, and addresses student financial barriers. It also recognizes the importance of accessible, equitable, and sustainable education in fostering academic excellence and human capital development. Providing merit-based financial assistance to honored students will help alleviate their financial burden, motivate sustained academic performance, and inspire more students to pursue excellence. Section 6, Paragraph 2 of Republic Act Number 10648, known as his Scholar ng Bayan Act of 2014, states that local government units are encouraged to create their own scholarship program. Section 16 of the Local Government Code of 1991 provides that every local government unit shall exercise the powers expressly granted, those necessarily implied durfrum, as well as powers necessary, appropriate or incidental for its efficient and effective governance, and those which are essential to the promotion of general welfare. After careful review and study, the committees found that ordinance Number 256 is compliant and in accordance with existing laws and regulations. As to recommendations, considering the foregoing, the committees after careful review and study hereby recommend for the approval of ordinance Number 256 of the Sanggunyang Bayan of Lantapan Bukinon for being proper in form and substance. So moving for the approval of this committee report, Your Honor.
Injections, comments, if there being none, motion is approved.
Another committee report, Your Honor, on women and family relations and on roles and privileges, to which was referred ordinance Number 2025-D2210, on the 24th Regular Session approved on August 17, 2025, of the Sanggunyang Bayan of Manolo Fortich Bukinon, entitled, "An Ordinance Establishing Guidelines for the Efficient and Effective Implementation of the Parent Effectiveness Service Program in the Municipality of Manolo Fortich Bukinon and for Other Purposes." Have considered the same and hereby submit their findings, comments, and recommendations. As to the findings, ordinance Number 2025-D2210 seeks to institutionalize the parent effectiveness service program within the Municipality of Manolo Fortich Bukinon. The parent effectiveness service program is typically a program aimed to enhancing parenting skills, strengthening family units, promoting responsible parenthood, and supporting the overall well-being of children. This is significant because families form the primary social unit and effectiveness of parental supervision. Guidance and support has implications for children development, education, outcomes, and social welfare. Enshrined in the 1987 Philippine Constitution, the state recognizes the sanctity of the family life and shall protect and strengthen the family as basic autonomous social institution. Republic Act Number 11908, other known, otherwise known as the Parent Effectiveness Service Program Act, is designed to empower parents and their rules as primary caregivers by providing access to educational programs and resources. The law aims to strengthen family units by offering serene and effective parenting practice, child development, health and nutrition, and values formation. It emphasizes the crucial role of parents in promoting their children's growth and safeguard their rights. After careful review and study, the committees found that ordinance Number 2025-D2210 is compliant and in accordance with existing laws and regulation. As to recommendations, considering the foregoing, the committees after careful review and study hereby recommend for the approval of ordinance Number 2025-D2210 from the Sanggunyang Bayan of Manolo Fortich for being proper, in order, and within the competence of the Sanggunyang Bayan concerned to pass? So recommended for the approval of this committee report, Your Honor.
Injections, comments, if there are none, motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Casinabe.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please proceed.
Proceeding to Item Number 21, in the absence of the Chairman of the Committee, the Honorable Board Member Mario Albaricio, Mr. Chairman, as requested by the Chair, the Chair of the Committee, in behalf of the Chairman, Mr. Chairman, by this representation to report on this matter, this is a joint item Number 21, Mr. Chairman, Joint Committee Report in the Committee on Labor, Manpower, Development, and Rules and Privileges, to which was Committee Report Number 2025-M006, and also Committee Report Number 2025-R333. This is, Mr. Chairman, an ordinance, Number 161062, Series of 2025, approved on September 30, 2025, the Sanggunyang Palalongsood of Malebalai City, Bukinon, entitled, "An Ordinance Establishing the Livelihood Monitoring Council of the Malebalai City, Defining Its Powers, Functions, Responsibilities, and Appropriating Funds Therefore." The findings of the committee, this ordinance recognize the vital role of the livelihood and economic development programs in improving the quality of life of its citizen in pursuit of inclusive growth and sustainable local development. There is a need for a dedicated body to oversee, coordinate, and monitor the implementation and impact of the livelihood programs funded by both the national and the local government sources. The ordinance seeks to develop a comprehensive livelihood development plan and establish that institutionalize the mechanism through the Livelihood Monitoring Council, which will serve as the coordinating, monitoring body for all the livelihood-related projects and programs in Malebalai City. The committee finds the ordinance to be necessary and beneficial for enhancing the transparency, coordination, accountability in the implementation of the livelihood programs, as well as defining the efficiency and effectiveness of the project or program through the proper monitoring and evaluation mechanism. This greatly emphasizes the importance of the multi-sectoral participation and collaboration together with the other NGOs, POs, and relevant government agencies to ensure the regular monitoring and inclusive evaluation. Furthermore, it provides the capacity building and technical assistance to livelihood stakeholders. The measure also includes an appropriation clause ensuring the required budget for its implementation shall be included in the annual budget of the city government. Recommendation of the committee, Mr. Chair. Thus, the committee hereby recommends for the approval of the ordinance Number 1062, Series of 2025, approved on September 30, 2025, of the Sanggunyang Palalongsood of Malebalai City, Bukinon, for being proper, in order, and within the competence of the Sanggunyang Palalongsood to enact. So recommended for the approval and adoption of this committee report, Mr. Chair.
Injections, comments, if there being none, motion is approved.
Honorable Presiding Officer, proceeding to Item Number 22, may we now recognize a gentleman from the 2nd Legislative District, the Honorable Board Member, Marlon Brando Dinlayan, Mr. Chair.
Honorable Dinlayan is recognized, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Majority Floor Leader, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have only one item, which is Number 22, Joint Committee Report of the Committees on Ways and Means, Trade and Industry, and on Rules and Privileges. Mr. Chairman, the Committees on Ways and Means, Trade and Industry, and on Rules and Privileges, to which was referred ordinance Number 2025-D2242, during 11th Regular Session, approved on September 25, 2025, of the Sanggunyang Bayan of Manolo Fortich Bukinon, entitled, "An Ordinance Accepting Indigent Residence of the Municipality of Manolo Fortich Bukinon from the Payment of Building Permit and Zoning Clearance Fees to Promote Social Equity and Encourage Compliance with Building Regulations." Have considered the same and hereby submit its findings, comments, and recommendations. Findings, the 1987 Philippine Constitution emphasizes the promotion of the state for a just and dynamic social order that will ensure the prosperity and independence of the nation and free the people from poverty through policies that provide adequate social services, promote full employment, a rising standard of living, and an improved quality of life for all. Municipal ordinance Number 2020-1383, otherwise known as the Revenue Code of the Municipality of Manolo Fortich Bukinon, impulses building permit fees and zoning clearance fees as part of the municipality's regulatory and revenue-generating functions. At present, there is a significant portion of residents in the Municipality of Manolo Fortich who are considered indigents and are unable to afford the required building permit fees, thereby discouraging them from securing proper permits and complying with existing building regulations. Accepting indigent residents from the payment of building permit and zoning clearance fees will encourage them to formalize the construction and enhance public safety by ensuring that structures are built in accordance with the National Building Code and improvement of their dwellings, thereby ensuring compliance with safety standards and contributing to a safer, healthier, and more orderly community. The exemption truly reflects the municipality's strong commitment solely to inclusive development, poverty alleviation, and the empowerment of marginalized sectors within its territorial jurisdiction. Recommendation, considering the foregoing, the committees after careful review and study hereby recommend for the approval of ordinance Number 2025-D2242, during 11th Regular Session, approved on September 25, 2025, of the Sanggunyang Bayan of Manolo Fortich Bukinon, for being in accordance with the law and within the scope of authority of the Sanggunyang to pass? So recommended, Mr. Chairman.
Injections, comments, if there are none, motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Marlon Dinlayan, Majority Floor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Proceeding to Item Number, uh, for Item Number 23, Mr. Chairman, as requested by the Chairman of the Committee, this item be deferred, Mr. Chair, for the committee report, so we will now proceed to the new business for the day, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please proceed.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. For the new business for the day, Mr. Chairman, for Item Number 24, 27, and 28, um, may we now recognize, Honorable Presiding Officer, the Honorable Board Member Attorney, Holis Monsanto, for these three items, Mr. Chairman.
Honorable Monsanto is recognized, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a proposed resolution on Item Number 24, this is a proposed resolution Number 073-D2025, authored by these representations. This refers to amendments, a resolution amending Resolution Number 035-D2025, Series of 2025, entitled. The Resolution Number 035-D2025 was a resolution profusely requesting and informing all municipalities and component cities in the Province of Bukinon to diligently comply before submission to the Sanggunyang Palaloigan to complete statutory and administrative requirements for the review of their respective annual and supplemental budget to avoid delays. This was a resolution which we sent to the local budget office of the LGU, so that when they will be submitting their appropriation ordinance, all the requirements are already there. Ang problema na tusahay man, kung kay magbalik-balik, ito na'tong mga local budget officer. So we passed this resolution requiring them to follow the list as stated in this resolution. However, there was a feedback coming from them that there are certifications and some requirements that may not be available at that time. So, we therefore added the word "if available" only, Mr. Chair, so that we, yes, available. Those requirements as listed, if available, will be necessary. So we just, yes, we just add the word "if available" in the amendment, uh, Mr. Chair. So, uh, with this, the proposed amendments will cover only section, or will cover only Paragraph 3 of Resolution Number 035-D2025, which shall read, "Whereas in compliance to the checklist on documentary and signature requirements in the revised Local Budget Review Form 1A for annual budget and LBR Form 1B for supplemental budgets are compulsory, if available, in the review process." So with that, Mr. Chair, uh, I move to pass this resolution amending, uh, Resolution Number 035-D2025, the 28th ISB, Series of 2023, Series of 2025, to add the word "if available." Moving for the adoption of this resolution, Mr. Chair.
Injections, comments, if there are none, motion is approved.
Proceeding to Item Number 27, Mr. Chair, this is a communication received by the Committees on Appropriations and on Rules and Privileges, particularly a letter dated October 21, 2025 with attachment, coming from the Office of the Provincial Budget Officer, Provincial Budget Office, Province of Bukinon, which transmitted to this August body for appropriate action. Supplemental Budget Number 2, General Fund and Special Account, Local Economic Enterprise, calendar year 2025, of the Municipality of Don Carlos Bukinon, in the amount of 21,244,194 pesos. Attached to the said communications are budget documents and technical review analysis for reference and perusal. After going over the same, the committee finds the said supplemental budget Number 2 to be proper and in order, subject of course to the existing budgeting, accounting, and auditing rules and regulations. So recommended for approval, Mr. Chair.
Injections, comments, if there are none, motion is approved.
Next is Item Number 28, also a letter dated October 17, 2025, with attachment, coming from the Office of the Provincial Budget Officer, Provincial Budget Office, Province of Bukinon, which transmitted to this August body for appropriate action. Supplemental Budget Number 2, General Fund, calendar year 2025, of the Municipality of Malit Bukinon, in the amount of 10,987,061 pesos and 43 centavos. Attached are budget documents and technical review analysis for reference and perusal. Again, the committee after going over the same, Again, the committee after going over the same, finds the said supplemental budget number 2 to be proper and in order, subject, of course, to the existing budgeting, accounting, and auditing rules and regulations. So recommended for approval, Mr. Chair.
Objections, comments, if there are none, motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Monsanto.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, proceeding to items number 25 and 26 by this representation, Mr. Chair.
Please proceed, sir.
25 and 26. And from items number 29, 30, 31, and 32, as requested by the chairman of the committee, Mr. Chair, and also be reported by this representation.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. From items number 25 and 26, these are all the endorsement, Mr. Chairman, from, with, with the attachment from the head of the PGSO, the back chairman, Attorney Minister Icajes, Mr. Chairman, forwarding the set of legal documents for the renewal of accreditation, Mr. Chairman, as a contractor engaged in business with the provincial government of Bukinon. For item number 25, Mr. Chairman, this is a, uh, the renewal for accreditation of the Dbrex Construction Services. For item number 26, Mr. Chairman, the 4G and P Construction. For the Dbrex Construction G Services, Mr. Chairman, this is located in Block 17, Lot 50 of the Grand Meadows subdivision, Phase 1, Batangan, Balensia City, and also the 4G and P Construction, with the address located at Zone 11, Farokpor, Barangay 19, Hingoog City of Visamis Oriental. This is the application for the renewal accreditation as contractor to engage business in the provincial governor and the government, provincial government of Bukinon, having established that this two firm has fully complied with the necessary obligation and essential requirements to transact business as per evaluation conducted by the bids and awards committee. Thus, Mr. Chairman, the omnibus motion for approval of the renewal application of these two contractors, Mr. Chairman, from items number 25 and 26, Mr. Chair.
Objections, comments, if there are none, motion is approved.
Mr. Chairman, items number 29, 30, 31, and 32, this is supposedly, Mr. Chair, to be reported by the Honorable Board Member Attorney Oliver Owen Garcia, as requested, Mr. Chairman, by this representation. Item number 29, Mr. Chair, letter dated October 16, 2025, from the provincial governor, Roelionel Peroke of the province, requesting this August body for an authority to demolish the two building structures of our benches located the Grandstand Barangay Sumpung, Malabala City, Bukinon, where this is part of the provincial government of Bukinon plans to construct the new office buildings and facilities and relocate these located offices at the Grandstand area to provide more space for offices, storage facilities, and parking for the certain offices. Hebe equipment and vehicles attached for this matter, Mr. Chairman, as requested, this item be referred to the committee, Mr. Chair, for deeper inquiry. Committee on Engineering, I think, Engineering, Mr. Chair, as chaired by the Honorable Board Member Attorney Oliver Garcia for this matter. And lost, we have a loss? Yeah, so, so moving for the deferment, and this item be referred to the Committee on Engineering and Loss, Mr. Chair.
Objections, comments, if there being none, motion is approved.
Honorable Presiding Officer, proceeding to item number 30. This is a, uh, the back resolution number 2025-549 of the provincial governor, Roelionel Peroke of this province, requesting this body for authority to sign the contract of agreement purchase order for the supply and delivery of the IT equipment for various offices with the following suppliers, Mr. Chairman, the BSWIS Computer Center, the amount of 803,180 pesos, Exico Computer Services, 294,530, and the Millenial Tech Computer and Office Supplies, 646,090 pesos, with the grand total of 1,743,800. So, this is, um, certified as urgent by the provincial governor and the the bids and awards committee is procurement, the provincial project was already conducted by the provincial bids and awards committee in accordance with the limiting rules and regulation of Republic Act 9184. Thus, this item, Mr. Chairman, so moving for the passage of the of passage of authority for the approval, the request of provincial governor of this item number 30, Mr. Chairman, for the supply and delivery of the IT equipment for various offices, Mr. Chair.
Objections, comments, there being none, motion is approved.
Proceeding to our addendum 1, Mr. Chairman, we have two items. For item number 31, Mr. Chairman, this is a letter dated October 23, 2025, from the provincial governor, Roelionel Peroke, requesting this August body for authority to enter into a deed of donation by and between the provincial government of Bukinon and the Department of the Social Welfare and Development Field Office, Region 10, for the latter donates for the properties described as nine pieces of the HDPE blue plastic drums, 200 liters equivalent to 13,500, and the five pieces of the HDPE pipe, two inches, 63 mm by 60 meter, equivalent to 90,000. The attached is the copy of the proposed deed of donation for the reference, and, Mr. Chair, thus this matter has been considered also one urgent, so moving for the passage of a resolution authorizing the provincial governor to enter into a deed of donation by and between the provincial government of Bukinon and the Department of Social Welfare and Development Field Office, Region 10, for this item, Mr. Chairman, so moving for the, uh, approval of the passage of the resolution granting authority of provincial governor as requested, as the matter is urgent, Mr. Chair.
Objections, comments, if there are none, motion is approved.
Last item, Mr. Chairman, in our addendum 1, this is again a letter dated October 21, 2025, the back resolution number 2025-642 of the provincial governor, Roelionel Peroke of this province, requesting this August body of an authority to sign a contract of agreement for the supply and delivery of one lot construction materials and other supplies for the various offices and hospitals, with one supplier, the TMM Construction Supplies, for the contract cost of 964,036 pesos and 19 centavos. For the procurement of the provincial project was conducted by the provincial bids and awards committee in accordance with the limiting rules and regulation of Republic Act 12009. This request is certified as urgent, Mr. Chair, from the provincial governor, thus moving for the passage of the resolution authorizing our provincial governor for the contract of agreement for the supply and delivery of one lot construction materials and other supplies for the various offices and hospitals for the contract cost of 964,036 pesos and 19 centavos, Mr. Chair.
Motion?
Ah, yeah, so moving for the passage of the
In a second. Objections, comments, if there are none, motion is approved.
Mr. Chairman, we are, we will now proceed to the other communication since we have no item tabled in the third and final reading, Mr. Chair. So proceeding, Mr. Chairman.
Please, please proceed.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. I move for the following, Mr. Chair. Item number 1 and 2 be forwarded to the Committee on Appropriation for information and reference. Item number 3 be forwarded to the Committee on Land Use, Human Settlement, and Land Reform for the appropriate action. Item number 4 be noted, requesting our secretary to post the TSP bulletin board for the ERC Order Notice of Virtual Hearing and the Bosicos, the TGP application, Mr. Chair. And item number 5 be forwarded to the Committee on Engineering Public Works for information and reference. So moving for the approval as presented or enumerated, Mr. Chairman.
Objections, comments, if there are none, motion is approved. Yes, comment from Honorable Monsanto, go ahead, sir.
Uh, can we, as to item number 5, this is, I believe, in response to the resolution we have passed, wherein we require the Regional Director of the PDWES to provide us the
Copy.
Update of the copy. Can we be given a copy on the status of the, uh, on those projects, Mr. Chair? If we could be provided that to the next theory, uh, on the next session, Mr. Chair.
Uh, this is, I remember it right, Mr. Chairman, it was authored by our good Presiding Officer, the Vice Governor, regarding the list of all the projects, of various projects in the, uh, different engineering district in the province of Bukinon, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, but, uh, as you can see, you know, this is a report from the regional office.
Yeah.
So hopefully this is comprehensive.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, because, uh, based on some reports, na mga projects from, uh, within the respective districts, nawala na appeals reports.
Ah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's why, Mr. Chairman, as manifested by Honorable Board Member Attorney Holis Monsanto, Mr. Chairman, that all the, I think, the board members be also, uh,
Yes.
Furnish copies
Yes, yes.
For the list of the different, uh, various, uh, projects, you know, in the territorial jurisdiction of the province of Bukinon, Mr. Chair.
There is a request from the secretary, Mr. Chair, that this, the copy will just be sent through email.
Baga kini?
Thirty-three pages.
Yes. Yeah. Pwede nga ikuwan, iextract ang skara distrito para nga at least ma, by district lang ba?
By district alam.
By district.
Okay, okay, okay.
So we will be also given the copy siguro nalang, not email, Mr. Chair?
No, yes, copy.
Oh, the hard copy, by district. Anyway. Yeah. Ayaw. Talan, talan Board Member. Okay, because I do understand, Mr. Chairman, by virtue of this, uh, project, so that we also have the right to know, Mr. Chairman. Okay, parapun nga, because after this one, Mr. Chair, all these projects will be turned over depende ha, kung atong iaccept, atong, Mr. Chairman, considered as the, uh, one of the, our provincial, uh, kini, kanan, sana, inventory to be provincial road, Mr. Chairman, for the maintenance of this, uh, kining mga road detours, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, but, uh, like to make this, uh, uh, of record nga, on record nga, until now. Wala pa kagaya punta karesebo program of works nga atong ipangayo atong nagani ang taga-region re. Until now, wala pa kaya po program.
May I proceed with the other matters, the board member, Mr. Chair?
Please proceed.
Mr. Chair?
Board Member Pipito? Oh, okay. Okay, are you, are you going to yield to the, uh, doctor? Okay, the doctor.
Mr. Chairman, this is regarding on the, uh, water permit application filed by the El Fresco Resort. This is in Bangkod, Malabala City, Mr. Chair. Can I have the, uh, committee meeting on this matter, Mr. Chair, on November 4, uh, Tuesday, at 9 o'clock? May I inquire first, Mr. Chairman, if there are some, uh, committee scheduled on that day, on November 4? On November 4?
We have, uh, tourism committee At 10 o'clock, Mr. Chair.
So can I have that, uh, my committee meeting on 9 o'clock, Mr. Chair? Because there is only one, uh, water permit, uh, application. Actually, this is just for the, this is for the posting in our bulletin board, Mr. Chair, for the committee Environmental Protection and Climate Change and Disaster Preparedness for this matter, Mr. Chairman, at 9 o'clock in the, uh, morning. And this is two applicants? Yeah, I think, uh, can I have this, Mr. Chair, two water permit applicants on 9 o'clock in the morning on, on November 4 in the Committee on Environmental Protection and Climate Change, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is noted, Mr. Chair.
Okay, and my manifestation also, Mr. Chairman, um, can I have also this matter be scheduled for the committee meeting regarding the ordinance proposed by our PCL Federation President regarding on the amendment of our ordinance 2023-031R, establishing the uniformity of the Driss attire, the code, during the conduct of regular session, until that he will be present, Mr. Chair, because I do understand that he is now still, I think, on the recovery process, no? Sige, so pagbalik nalang nga, I would schedule this matter for the committee so that we can have our committee reports on this, on this, uh, proposed amendment of the ordinance, Mr. Chair. So I think that would be all by this representation, Mr. Chair, thank you very much.
Thank you, majority floor. Honorable Pipito, sir, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Mr. Chair, I have here a copy of the, uh, resolution coming from, coming from the Office of the Sanguniang Barangay, oh, Barangay Maapag, Balensia City, Bukinon. Um, the resolution is entitled "Resolution Respectfully Seeking Assistance from the Office of the Provincial Vice Governor, Honorable Clive Kinyo, and from the members of the Sanguniang Palaluigan, Province of Bukinon, to facilitate the request from the head office of the Development Bank of the Philippines not to bid the residential lot to and proctory Maapag Balensia City, Bukinon." Um, I think this would be referred, best referred to the committee of the whole, Mr. Chair. So, uh, maybe we could, uh, invite, if we invite them next week for a committee meeting, uh, regarding this matter?
Uh, I'm sorry, what was that again about?
Um, is a resolution seeking assistance from the Office of the Provincial Vice Governor and the, uh, board members, the Sanguniang Palaluigan members of the Province of Bukinon to facilitate the request to, of the head, from the head of office of the Development, uh, Development Bank of the Philippines not to bid the residential lot for a proctory and proctory Maapag Balensia City, Bukinon. Murad na sila problema sa ilang, uh, area, Mr. Chair, murad na foreclosed, something, so murad na sila, murad, kapatabang sila, murad mahangyo, uh, something. Anyway, hindi ko kakwan sa exact details.
Naforeclosed nila, um, pero sila wala nagbayad sa kuwan, ah, unsa man.
Ang problema, Mr. Chair, is the resident ang affected, di rin kay barangay lang bitang area. Uh, so, siguro, mukhang request po siyang
Mga ayaw sa taong Yeah, let's, yeah, let's invite them.
Let's invite them, Mr. Chair, para mas makwan sa kasi sa details.
Yes, 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 yes.
So we would like to invite, uh, the Barangay Council of Barangay Maapag, Balensia City, Bukinon, and then, uh, siguro, Balensia, uh, Balensia Office, uh, toon jaro, ingiyon, our, derye. Uh, derye ng head, ano, uh, sana, manager, kaling derye sa head, uh, money, main office, main branch, sige. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
May we know the time?
Um, kajut ramang siguro ang tourism to, kuya ba, 10 kika? Kuya muragamay lamang to duwang ato? Siguro 11, pwede 11, sumpay sa tourism, Mr. Chairman? A one hour, a one hour, kadi dayan po siguro ni, siguro lamang pinpaminawan sa ilang concerned. So, siguro 11:00 AM, Mr. Chairman, on Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Pipito.
May we now recognize our secretary, Mr. Chairman, for the secretary's time?
Yes, Attorney Magwali? You have an important announcement?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, good afternoon to everyone. Please bear with me, I have a lengthy, uh, announcement, Mr. Chairman, to this August body. Uh, first, uh, item that I would discuss is the forthcoming, uh, SP Foundation Anniversary. Second is, uh, the invitation of the Vice Governor to Shergao. And then third is...
Shergao?
Yeah, then the IRP, something we will discuss related to IRP. And then as well as the selection of best employee on the part of the board members on this coming SP Foundation, Mr. Chairman. Um, as we can recall, we, going back to item number one, we have already, uh, agreed that we will hold our Christmas party on the 9th of December at Folk Arts Theater, Mr. Chairman. So we will now present with you the following program for your information, uh, for the information this body, unhasan program. So this is the program, Mr. Chairman. Um... Invocation, uh, this will be assigned by one of the board members, uh, or, or agreed by this body, Mr. Chairman. Christmas opening salvo, welcome message, Christmas message, these are still, uh, wala patay, uh, naasay na na, Mr. Chairman, so... This is, uh, these are our VIPs to be invited, Mr. Chairman, as proposed. Our, uh, honorable Congressman from the Province of Bukinon and Congresswoman. And the second part is the, the presentation. Um...
Mag-sukad sukad ang gatungas ato na, si, kung laar niya, dage do si kung kuwan? Kung ayon? Muragyan, bagay na gatungang man?
Yeah. We will try again, Mr. Chairman. Uh, if we can send an earlier invitation, uh, once we are able to approve this program, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Then, uh, on the second part, Mr. Chairman, is, uh, this are the following, uh, or the order of presentation from our staff, including the board members, Mr. Chairman. So, bunot bunot, kung kinsey una makauna.
Amanani na bunot bunot na day? Uh, humana, humana day?
Uh, so, um, Provincial Vice Governor's Office and Secretary's Office combine first, may, may present first. And then followed by the third district, and then by the first district, and then the ex-officio, followed by the fourth legislative district, and the second legislative district. Yes?
Yes, Honorable Pipito?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman, ato, gamay nga concerns of an staff, Mr. Chairman. Uh, basin daw ko pwede emerge ang first and fourth district, since gamay ramang daw ko noang, nagduha ramang daw ko no ka offices, then if pwede, uh, muragat ako sa ex-officio, murag tulog ka offices, isagun. The call man amot, kung daw kompremio. If pwede, pero, um, pero murag mas bibuta na ako, siguro, Mr. Chairman, o daghan. Okay, presentation, nga, gamay na kayo, sana, participan sa murag bingaw, so... Siguro pwede, siguro i-emerge, pwede.
Basin daw ma-overcrowded na po kayo ang kuwan, ang resulta ang bandit na nono perform tungod kay, ah, daghan na bataw sila?
For la, uh...
Ah, so nailime, nail, nine minimum, nine minimum.
Okay, saang third, ugang second, daghan naman ko sila daan, so kaya, kila ang, katong minimum na requirement, siguro.
Okay.
Okay, si, okay na, siguro, adal na lang. At emerge na na to, uh, attorney, siguro.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The pleasure of the body, Mr. Chairman.
If okay ang tanan, na... Pero if, eh... Well, anyway, um, idea, idea lang po to, Mr. Chairman, pero, um, kung mas, uh, para sa kuapod, may matto sa una, may ilhan yo na first, second, third, and fourth, mukha pwede, advantage na to. Pero if, sa first, isa po, wala pa, taga first, oh, silary, tanan mo... Kuya Board?
Vice Governor. Kami, kaya gamay, gamay ramang ang Vice Gov, office.
Well, anyway, um, idea lang, Mr. Chairman, if, if mo okay tanan for the, uh, ano?
Mr. Chairman? Yes, please proceed. Because, uh, it seems that, that there is also a proposal to invite also the former board members, since this is our founding anniversary, Mr. Chairman. So if we could also include them in the recognition, pero wala man ko sila dia, nakabutang. So we will also, uh, isingit na to din na sa tong program, at least put, marakunize po sila.
Thank you, thank you for the observation, Mr. Chairman. In fact, we have already in our mind to invite them. Pero wala pa, nabutang dia sa...
So, so atong isingit, huh?
Another, Mr. Chairman, sa third, awards and recognition of former SP.
Anara, aunada ya sa part three?
Ah.
Ah, okay, okay.
Ah.
Part, part two, day? Ah, okay, sige, sige.
So, amot na lang i-combine ang third and, I'm sorry, fourth and first legislative. First and fourth legislative district.
First and first, first of third, signal of... First of fourth.
Fourth. Uh, uh. Okay, so that's our only changes to our program, Mr. Chairman. Now, uh, going at the top, top, top mid, please. Uh, may we ask this, up, pataas to mga Palibat, opening, please, make. Um, may we ask this body, who would you assign to offer the invocation? And, uh, welcome message, as well as the Christmas message? For the...
Kung welcome.
Kids in charge.
Kung welcome.
So si Vice Gov?
Christmas i-Gob.
Christmas message by gob, okay.
Sige.
Copy, uh, Mr. Chairman. Um... Ah, sige, sige. Yes. Ah, sige, this is noted, uh, by, uh, Mr. Chairman. And then ang invocation, kami na, mo identify?
Ay lang, one, delete may lang one, mas, mas guapo, ang talang kuang yud. Player gid ba nga, personalized gid ba, delete na video? Ujuvidyo, ayan ang ujuvidyo.
Oh, yeah, delete video, katungyung kuang, uh, personalized yud, uh, offer. And then, uh... There is a proposal that Mambi will give the invocation. Okay, Mambi, uh, thank you, thank you, Mambi. So we will now directly proceed to our budget requirement for this, uh, uh, affair, Mr. Chairman. Nick kindly show the budget, the proposals. Tumoni atong budget na total ani, ato sa tanaw na totala. We, we need a total budget of 300,000, Mr. Chairman. However, na namani budget ani nga, ah, na ba? Pangitaan pa ni.
Ordinan sa ngikwan na?
Oh, naman tayo ordinan. Sa food, we have already budget for food, for that, Mr. Chairman. Sa, mana sa tong ordinan sa, Mr. Chairman, sa food? Now, uh, it is agreed by this honorable body that, uh, we will contribute 20,000 each. Now that 20,000, 30,000, uh, outside na na siya katong budget na to sa foods, yeah, giba sa ordinan, Mr. Chairman. So the proceeds of this is that, uh, uh, na award, uh, each employee, um, pili is a best employee. Now, who are this best employee? This come from the board members, uh, and to include the Vice Gov and the Office of the Secretary to the Sangguyan. And then, uh, we will explain later on what is our basis for the criteria, Mr. Chairman. Then we have, uh, a proceed for drinks, 50,000. We allocated fund for PGB, PGB fund, 3,000. With stipend, 2,000, decoration, uh, this is, uh, a computed amount of 18,500, uh, broken down in, at phalos, state decoration, 8,500, and then glam boot, katong patoy tuyok, bitong picture na to, muna. Glam boot na, then, uh, raff, raffle and doll prices, 138,000. Then for, uh, prizes for variety show, 36,000, so eye catcher denied, 2,000. Uh, judge token, 7,500, so pilak a judge, tulog. We have, uh, identified, uh, we have, uh, um, identified dapat tulog ka judges, Mr. Chairman, but at your discretion, kung kinsa nga tong i...
Sa mana sistema sa una?
Sa una, Mr. Chairman, we... Outside there, Mr. Chairman, last, uh, isa sa, tagia sa Susana. How do you? Ah, I'm sorry, from the academy, Mr. Chairman. Uh, from BCU and CMU, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. So, would you like to continue that, Mr. Chairman, you're from the academy, or what? Okay na, okay.
May that question, see Majority Floor?
Okay. Na, 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 na lang takoy pangutan na, Mr. Chairman, ba? Kung pilang magid ato, uh, giyonggi, allotted ani, sa tong regular na tong Christmas party, na patay budget?
Yes, sa base atong ordinan, Mr. Chairman, sa foundation, 200,000 na siya.
Wala ginato na increase, i-cancel na hangtog karoon?
Okay, ordinan, paman.
So pwede sa siguro na to ng amen, siguro, giyameng gali na to atong Dris code?
Yes, we can amen.
That's why, Mr. Chairman, this is, that is really unnecessary for us to increase also, because we cannot rely on our solicitations, because this is our regular activity. That's why there is really a need for us also, Mr. Chairman. Before we will approve our budget for the next year, so that everything will be in place na, we cannot rely on this matter, Mr. Chairman. Hindi abut na sa, suno tuwe, ini, ini October, ini na sa taipapledge na punta ni. So that we will have our regular budget really intended for this. Considering, Mr. Chairman, ha, atong condition di, dapat ato, ato, ato nangi anticipate, Mr. Chairman?
Wala magani approve is budget ang atong kuwan? Kanang unsana, mixer? Kanang mixer na to nga, kuwan? Oh, nagamit, kinato na para sa tuang kuwan, sa system, mixer, wala prove ay. Yes, uh, Honorable Pipito?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Buting hugo, kadi saan yo kamadyo nga, back up, back up ko niya. But, um, anyway, sa, um, kuwan po tong i-really ni, ni Madjo, Mr. Chairman, basin pwede na to tumuhaton, at least ang solicitations are external lang. And then I would like also to comment katong last week, um, so far ato na, andan is tag 10, kira isa. Siguro, ang nae mo, hatang more than 10, okay, muya pa, pero di rin ato pwede i-impose, kie kabalo mo, uh, kabalo, kie, si, si, Mr. Chairman, si Vice Gov, ting, ting solicit, ting man niya, bitaw ng December, dilam ya kai si Espimonya subuh, daghan biya kain. Oh, daghan biya kaya, so buat, midyo buat sa buang part kita, daghan niya, hula to ang pagan, gaman niya. So, siguro, okay, nanteng, pero nae gusto mo atang more than 10, pwede si, bulk em, winan na ba? Ako arpon na, sajasa lana, ako pwede, ingaan lang. Hah? Muna ang... Mo lagi, kie, ako to't sa tawi, ano, sohal tarong, kie, wudaghan biya, saka... Daghan na pa, absen.
No, uh, 20,000, uh, kobe na na, tong food na, Mr. Chairman, sa ordinan, kanan 300, 20,000 manang contribution na to.
So...
500 na?
All in all, um, we have 500,000 budget.
Di ko na siguro, kana ko budget, kie, diya ramang iskyot eh.
Kyot eh.
Anyway, katolang kuang, kuang, Mr. Chairman, uh, kuang gusto i-podi, i-paano ha? Uh, some steak kita ni, o... Alam-anam mo na na to? Anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Sige, at least, okay na na, minimum nga 10, and then best kuwan na yan, kung kuwan ga nobde magdalatag, atong kagling ulung agunon ito? Kung di kinabot to tong budget? Da'to bulang hoy?
Uh, uh, make me kindly show this first, second, third nya. So, we have consolation prizes, as well as the winner for the present, presentation, Mr. Chairman. The first one, the first win, the winner will receive 10,000. Second, 8,000, third, 6,000. Consolation, all it, 4,000 each, Mr. Chairman. So that is the proceeds, the proposed proceeds of our budget, Mr. Chairman, for this coming Christmas party.
So we are short by how much?
So far, wala pa, na sure, Mr. Chairman, because, uh, mapan niya propose na to. Kung ma-collect lang yud na to ang 300,000.
Ma-collect ang?
300,000, 20,000.
Yeah, but the 300,000 will be coming from the board members. All the board members. And then as already manifested by Board Member Pipito. Diba? So nasabutan na ba na last week?
Nasabutan, Mr. Chairman.
Ngatagbaitin, nasabutan na?
Nasabutan.
Nasabutan na, okay, na agreed by all? Yeah. Ako, okay ra kuwan na?
Yeah, it is already agreed, Mr. Chairman. So, ang patatilang nga, kung ma, ma, kumplito lang na collection, Mr. Chairman, ma...
Yeah. Anyway, it happens only kuwan man po. Yeah. Mahakupe sebera na kung gamay ako ah, treinta ako ah, sige, okay, treinta ako ah, sige, kera. Treinta ko ah. Kila mangita po't mila in, Mr. Chairman, first, perun, takadirira, takasuluduh.
So, uh, next, Mr. Chairman, is... Uh, the best employee, Mr. Chairman, in order to, uh, select fairly and, uh, based on merit, Mr. Chairman, we opted to, uh, base our rating, or criteria sa kanang gitawag nga, performance rating, sa praise, Mr. Chairman, imposed by the civil service and... imposed by the civil service and the provincial government of Bukinon. So, uh, these are, these are the criteria, Mr. Chair. Amo ipapili, Mr. Chair, morning surprise, Mr. Chair. This is, uh, provided by the civil service and the provincial government of Bukinon. Una, kani, base yang IPCR, and then punctuality and attendance. And then, uh, third, um, exemplary conduct and ethical behavior. And then, performance of other duties beyond the calls of regular functions. And then innovations in the workplace, morning surprise. Now, uh, this is entirely adopted by all departments in the province of Bukinon. And with two, uh, in the, on the part of all, office of the secretary to the Sangunian Palalavigan, we will nominate our best employee based on this criteria. Now, uh, we offered the option to this honorable body, if you will also, uh, base your rating for your best employee on this criteria or the old criteria. Because, uh, nani say gamay, um, limitation, number one, delete siya mahatag sa GO. Sa, sa board members, siguro, anyway, Christmas, uh, foundation mani, jidi siguro i-base lang, oh, oh, GO not, jidi ni say new day. Pero, angat bantin pagod ani, preparatory ni, next year, kung namay empleadong ani, qualify na ani, they can be nominated for best employee in the provincial government of Bukinon. Pero again, delete nam, maapil tong GO. Oh, kie, kuwan man, plantilya position, man siya. Now, we would like to show the old criteria, Mr. Chair, katong, uh, gibasihan na to last year sa mga board members. Signed by the honorable board members. So, man ya, inyo mga criteria.
This will apply if you.
Uh, oh, yeah, oh, this will apply, number one.
Generic, eh?
Yeah, we can call it generic. So, we will leave this option on your part, Mr. Chair. You can. So, what is your basis, ang, atol lang surprise? Ang old, uh, you opt for the old, okay? Okay, thank you. So anyway, kamu mangyapoy magpili. Yeah, thank you. Now, uh, next, uh, announcement, Mr. Chair, is, uh, sa IAP na to, uh, I would like to cite what is in the rule. Under rule ten, uh, section two, I would like to write. When any member decides to deliver any remarks to the Sangunian, he shall rise and either directly request the chair or through the floor leader who shall request that he be recognized. When two or more members rise at the same time, the presiding officer or upon the motion of the floor leader shall recognize the member who is to speak first and shall alternate the floor between those who wish to speak for an, for or against a given question. The, the subject of this, uh, section, Mr. Chair, is that, before we can speak, we should be first recognized by the presiding officer. Um, this is advantageous to the office of the secretary to the Sangunian for record purposes, because, uh, we cannot, it is not audible that, uh, the member of the Sangunian speak, diya ala say lingkuranan. So, ang official giyod nga maricord na mo, katong i-recognize sa presiding officer, ay nakas, nagastan using the microphone, Mr. Chair.
Yes, because there are instances that the member speaks from her, from his or her seat. So, resulta, delete ma-record ogayo. So, delete siya audible, ang resulta, delete maapili sa kuwan, and what if very crucial ang yang comment? Oh, diba, very crucial yang comment or very substantial? So, delete ma-record. So, magliswad din tao na atong mga taga kuwan, so please, before you make a comment, ask first to be recognized and, kuwan, speak on the podium, speak clearly on the mic, do not comment from your chairs, okay?
Yes.
Kaya galiswad ang ato ang mga kuwan, ang ato ang mga sekretariat na to.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, um, uh, pardon, Mr. Chair, napaday sa criteria sa presentation, Mr. Chair. Morning criteria, Mr. Chair, sa presentation sa Christmas party, Mr. Chair, sa by district, nadine. Preparation, ten percent, appearance or costume, twenty five percent. Creativity, resolvefulness, twenty five percent. Stage presence, overall performance, forty percent. So, a total of hundred percent, so importante kayo, stage presence, so, nae impact ang daghan, or, uh, kana.
Pero na amang, na amang kailagi, minimum.
Yeah, we will just meet the minimum. Uh, can, can, can this honorable body agree how much will be the minimum para, liswad man sa.
Before, pila man.
Wala, wala mina ka-set, Mr. Chair.
Minimum thirty siguro, kaya otherwise kung fifteen, kaya ra kayo nga by district. Diba? Of course, samanta, tama, oh, guapo na kaya, luwag na kayo. Kaya kung gamay rapod, dal kita naon, malakayo. Kung gamay ra, diba? So, mas guapo dagha, minimum of thirty, maximum of fifty.
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Oh, kana, sige, minimum thirty, maximum fifty. Hahaha.
Nae impact.
Or wara, or wara.
Atol ina-impact kung maapil gitang board members, Mr. Chair.
Mas nae plus, plus points ba kung sayaw gitang board member ba?
Yeah.
Yeah. Nae inste, nae stage impact.
Uh, okay, thank you for that, Mr. Chair. We will now proceed to the-
By the way, kanos ang ani, ang date ani?
Uh, ninth of December, Mr. Chair.
December nine?
Yeah. Yeah, by the way, Mr. Chair, uh, that is year day, that is season day. Uh, we, we are contemplating if this honorable body is agreeable, if we can hold our Christmas party, our season during the morning.
Mas may pa, yeah, 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 in the morning.
Okay, para makapepata sa apon.
Angga, kuwan nung pista sa emakulit konsepsiyon na, marag madyo buyong buyong pa. Eight, haha. Adi, kuwan po na, holiday na, huh? Oh, holiday is eight, uh, uh, eight is holiday. Uh, so, mayo kayo, that's a good date, on December nine.
Nine, morning.
Yeah, morning, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now, uh, uh, next important announcement is that the honorable vice governor, I'm sorry, governor, provincial governor of the province of Bukinon, is, uh, inviting, uh, for the whole Sangunian Palalavigan members for an activity purposely to fin, finalizing the provincial vision and defining key success indicators for development. This is the, to be scheduled on December three to six, twenty twenty five, that is Wednesday to Friday. Vineyard, Siargao. December. December three to six. So, nag-submit sila dari sa aku, Mr. Chair, of form.
Oh, three, four, five, six.
And then, yes, Mr. Chair, it, it just happen, Mr. Chair nga, I have na to na receive. But, we have to confirm on or before October thirty, twenty twenty five, sa PPDO.
Three, four, five, and six. Asa mandepet ang location sa Siargao?
Siargao, Mr. Chair, uh, siguro ang details ani will follow, but Siargao lang ang ilang nabutang doringa vineyard, Mr. Chair.
So, to those who are here, who, who will be attending? All expenses paid, magan siguro na, no?
Siguro, okay, oh, namay, marag nae taga PPDO nakita na ko, ganina. Wala, okay. I, I believe this is Gov, Governor Pandi Geroni, kie kilamin nag-invite, Mr. Chair. And then, kung magconfirm, proceed, uh, Mr. Chair, um, magperma lang ani kuwan from kai siguro for reservation purposes, so.
Okay, so permaha na?
Yes, Mr. Chair, katong mo confirm, and then katong absent, amo patuyukan, Mr. Chair.
Magcheck na schedule?
A charge to individual budget, then, Mr. Chair.
A charge to individual budget?
Oh. Siargao, right?
Ipachack sa, una po ba budget ang mga board members, kuna, parang, diya lang i-charge?
Tawag bi para, grado. So, you, uh, while waiting, uh, we, we will, we are calling the PPDO, um, Mr. Chair.
Sige, ato antala, kaya that's very crucial sa kuwan, that, that's for the mission vision of for how many years? For the next?
So, so to be identified pa, Mr. Chair, which place in Siargao. And then, uh, charge to individual account now, Mr. Chair.
Individual accounts. Okay.
So, yes, Mr. Chair, karuna. On or before October thirty. For confirmation.
Dileo, how much man pod ang kuwan, ang individual accounts, na, tsal, personal or budget sa board members?
Chargeable sa kuwan.
Sa budget, sa board members.
Pila, pila man ang ma-charge?
Including overtime?
There, actually, there is no later, actually, we receive, Mr. Chair, only this.
That's why, that's why we need some clarification for that matter. Because we do not know, really, the details, about, for the training, uh, design. Unless otherwise, we will submit to the, for those, uh, dated.
Hey, maragam, uh, I think, uh, very minimal na man siguro magasto na, kaya kuwan.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, but, but I think, Mr. Chair, uh, that, that, I think that matter will be, siguro, atol ng staff siguro, may mokonfirm on, on, at, diya sa siguro tamu signify that matter, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, ipachack sa kung pa, yeah, uh, please inform your staff, no, uh, please coordinate nalang, uh, jo or kuwan, no, coming from the office of the secretary, coordinate with the staff. Uh, first is pila ang magasto. Kana, pila ang magasto, and then kula pa ba'y mga budgets ang mga board members?
Considering also, Mr. Chair, that one, two, three, we are only eight here, what about the rest of our colleague? So, I think we will decide on that matter on, uh, October thirty or before, on that date, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, we will make an appeal to reset the deadline.
Ang, di, ang ila po da na, kaya booking, yes, ang booking, the, the closer we are to the date, the more expensive it is. So, mula nga kuwan sila, gakka kuwan sila, then, I would suggest siguro nga, mag, your plano ta na. Layo, kena napodlang yang joy ride nga, kapui kayo, haha. Lalo buli ang joy ride nga, kapui kayo. Asa tamaki? Ano, magdaba oriental, bete kelayo, bagay eto? Oh, kung gikan mo sa south, kana.
Ani, Mr. Chair.
Ah, gikan sa south.
Kung magi nagdaba oriental, pagabotin mo dito, kanang Katiil, that is where the Alibogog Falls were, diba? Located Alibogog Falls, after Katiil, Buston is part of Surigao, then maagian ka dito, Buston, padalung din ka dito, Mr. Chair, sa Bisleg, mga go, then, pwede na na ka dito, padalung na yon sa Tandag.
Oh, taga pagabot, pagabot.
Tandag City, then, may mong maagian to, katong mga karaskal, katong mayning area, Mr. Chair, diya si Surigao City.
Guapo kaya dito, okay, okay, kaya lang slide dito. Atala, ingo, dora ka maaghi. Oh, ako butuan ko. Kita dito.
Ato ka prospered, prosperidad, Barubo, Lianga, then Britannia, then Tandag, yapon. In which, dili na kamaghi dito sa daba oriental, mas dool-dol siya gamay.
Sige. Bugma na, kaya hapon naman. Yes, honorable kasinabi.
I cannot, uh, join the group kaya una, six, anti bispira sa Kibawi. Yeah, kalihok, oh, emakulit konsepsiyon, kalihokan sa panimbahan, haha. Then, we are busy preparing for our educators congress, ano nga mga dates, so, count me out, I cannot go with the game.
Ako, I, uh, well, okay, that's, uh, okay, but remember kasinabi is already signifying, kuwan, but ako, I'm, I'm very inclined to, kuwan, to join. Yeah, I'm inclined to join, you should too. Kibawi man to, diya ito meramag. Oh, you should too. Sige, so, katulang, then, and, and, please ask, so are we allowed to bring, what's one, uh, staff? Missa, missa, isa lang? Oh?
Will include that query, Mr. Chair.
Oh, or?
Nagi-driver.
Oh, nae driver, diba? Hmm. Absen driver lang, or, nsa ba ka, mag-hire, magkatagban, magusa lang ta, nsa ba? O ba? Mag-hire lang ta siguro, di lang ta kamay na atong basa na to, kaya. Dili, most likely, ang ilang kuwan na na, is magkuwan na sila, oh, uh, no, kanang, uh, travel and tours, kanang, oh, oh, si tawa kana? Agency, oh, agency, na, na, na agency, so, will be taken care of, so, ang kuwan lang is, huh? Ah, Siargao lang, agency ba? Oh, depende, kanan may ubal nga, from here, oh, kuwan onggo. Oh, diba? Oh, kuwan na na matiman, di okay na. Alagi, so, I would suggest nga, from here, magusa na lang ta sa kanan, diba dito, padalung. Diba dito, padunong.
Miss, Miss, Mr. Chairman. Um, ang problema na to, ni is ang weather eh. Because nanamukin na booking, sige lang nila rebook, rebook ang, uh, sa reset, reset ang schedule, considering sa weather. Especially, matabok pa magunta. Mani problema na eh.
Okay, raman, namay lab jacket. Nabi kedyobina daan. May maglangway ta, na magsakay ang tagbar ko. Anyway, sige, so, please clarify lang, kung sa ang ilang, kung sa, kung sa itinerary ano, no? And then how will be accommodated? Kaya ako, I, I am, I'm willing to go, and so is the majority floor. Okay, anything else?
So that is all, Mr. Chair, thank you very much.
So katung, sa to, manang estroehan nato, genina sa, kwan, sa meeting nato, genina.
Uh, katung i-uh, recognize, ang kwan, I need to be recognized, a speaker. And then napadai sa ano, uh, dapat may magsikan, kademusyon.
Kademusikan, okay.
Okay, para maricord po namo, kinsa may magsikan.
So unless unanimously magsikan, then, muna lang to kung, or delete, may identify kung kinsa. So the presumption is unanimously magsikan, then, then sila, okay? Yes.
I would like also to clarify all these things regarding on the kanabitan ato ang mga commendations, resolutions. Siempre si autor, Mr. Chair, dapat, um, ilimit lang nato ang ato ang mode of questioning, Mr. Chair. Kaya mo'y makapa taas sa to discussion? Diba? Because I, I, we, we do understand nga, nanamuksa mo, may assistan. Just a matter of overview lang siguro, na na, then.
Salamat lang.
Salamat.
Okay, sige.
Yeah, actually, before, after reading the resolution, ipa-turirang invited ya. After ano, ulat na.
Okay. Kaya uban biya, gaani dili, kapeper gitwo gilahang kwan. Ilang mag-short message nila, diba? So let's give them that opportunity. And, yeah, finally, ang isa sa nakwan is, uh, during sa atong audit nato, sa ISO, for a re-accreditation nato. Na ay findings dito nga. Training for local legislation. So every term supposedly naa magitan na. And then, that's why I asked board member or president, president sa PBMLP Bukinon, kung naabay up and coming. Kaya kung, uh, ingon sila nga, ang isa sa, muna ang isa sa iyang pangitao na certification, kung trained, bagyod ta for, I mean, marag, I know you are all kwan ano, pero marag refresher ba? Oh, refresher siya. Okay, ta, ay, ilang ito ba? Okay, board member, kwan, Pipito.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, nag, nagpaso. Nagpaso ko staff gina sa DLG, Mr. Chair, uh, so ang reply nila was, wala pa na bagong schedule, uh, last schedule nila was September 9, 2025. So gaholat para sila sa region, para sa next dual schedule.
Yes, go ahead.
Neo?
Pero, I, I have, I received, Mr. Chair, the communication, uh, can I?
Yes, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. San siya, Dux Dosis.
Okay, yeah, I was about to give you a copy also.
Yeah, pero nanamay tay mga, na, Dux Dosis, diba?
Dux Dosis, so, karong kimaragwa, namatay budget. So, sa next year, for next year, na ay, uh, sa January 14 to 16, sa Cebu City. Sa January 21 to 23, sa Iliwili City, which is, kwan po siya, to tunong po siya si Di Nagyang Festival. And then February 12 to 14, Lakalme, Lak, Lak Carmela di Boracay, or Boracay island, and then February 23 to 25, Tagaytay Country Hotel. Pero na, ang marag kita, na ko dery marag arang-arang dery na schedule is kini sa Iliwili City. January 21 to 23, uh, Imperial Hotel, sa Iliwili City. Marag, okay na siya nga, kwan. Okay na siya nga schedule. Yeah. So anyway, uh, we will give you copies of this. Para, ah, na, na ilang kopya, nilang mga kopya. So can we give this to kwan?
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, further query, Mr. Chair, regarding atong DPWH nga report, uh, we are instructed to submit hard copy in each legislative district. We would like to know to whom among the members of East Legislative District namong i-address ang baong copy, Mr. Chair. Because namay Legislative District nga na itulok ang members, napayduo Legislative District nya dua. So, kada Legislative District is saruman. Namong tagaan nga set um copies, Mr. Chair. So we would like to know, Mr. Chair, kung who among them, namong tagaan, Mr. Chair. Pero for sure, we will send email to each board member.
Okay, so email na lang?
Email na lang. Ah, sige, thank you. Ah, sige.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, please, kwan lang, please get back to us on, kwan, katung sa, uh, Siargao nga trip with Governor Unil.
Sure, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So, since there are no others, so here's a story from an Indian Christian. And this is about civic duty, civic duty. The story is told of a king who placed a heavy stone in the middle of the road and then hid and watched to see who would remove it. All kinds of people came up to it and worked their way around it. Some loudly blamed the king for not keeping the roads clean. But all of them dodged their duty of getting the stone out of the way. At last, a poor peasant came along. He was carrying vegetables to town for sale. He came up to the stone, took a good, long look at it, laid down his load of vegetables, and with his shoulder rolled the stone into the gutter. When he came back, he found a purse full of money, which had lain right under the stone. He opened it and found it full of gold pieces, and a note from the king, which said that the money was for the one who would remove the stone. So always perform your civic duty.
Thank you. For the adjournment of our regular session.
The 8th regular session of the 28 SP is hereby adjourned. Thank you, lady and gentleman.